Good evening. Welcome to the East Hampton City Council meeting for Wednesday, October 14th, 2020. The meeting tonight is being recorded and broadcast live via East Hampton Media on Charter Channel 193 and livestreamed on East Hampton Media's YouTube channel. Our thanks to the great team at East Hampton Media for their assistance in broadcasting this and other meetings. All councilors and participants in this meeting are gathered remotely via Zoom conferencing application. Remote public meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic are the result of an executive order by Governor Baker on March 12th, 2020 to allow us to do so. I remind both the members of the city council and the members of the public to remain on mute until recognized by the chair. This meeting is now called to order. Barbara, could we have the roll call, please?
Sure. Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Present.
Omar Gomez?
Here.
JP Kozinski?
He's coming in. He's just joining. Come back to him.
Okay. I don't know if I called Bill Lynch or not, but Tom Peak?
Here.
Dan Rist?
Here.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Here.
Owen Zera?
Here.
JP is here now.
Okay. All right.
You're muted, Peg.
I didn't do it. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. We have many minutes from past meetings, so we're going to go one by one because we're not entirely sure if people have amendments and/or if they were not here. So I'll have a motion for the minutes of August 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second for the minutes of August 5th. Any conversation? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion for the minutes of August 19th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second for the minutes on August 19th. Any changes? Discussion? Barbara?
I'm going to start with you again, Peg. Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
abstain.
See, I knew somebody did. Motion for September 2nd minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second on September 2nd minutes. Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Abstain.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion for the approval of the minutes for September 16th.
So moved.
Motion is second on September 16th minutes. Any discussion? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Motion passes. Well, we got through all those. That's good. We're now moving into public speak, and for those who are attending this meeting to speak on any topic other than what is on the public hearing, please remember that it's your turn to speak, so the council will be listening but not responding to your comments in any way. We ask that you remain respectful and direct your comments only to the city council. If you would like to speak, use the Raise Your Hand feature by selecting the Participants option at the bottom of your screen, then click Raise Hand at the bottom of the Participants window. If you're dialing in via phone only, you can raise your hand by pressing *9. You can also mute and unmute your line by pressing *6. For everyone, please remain on mute until called, at which point you can unmute your own connection and begin your comment. Before commenting, please state your name and your street or your town if you do not live in East Hampton. If you find that your internet connection is slow, please remove the video portion. Remember that you will have three minutes to make your comment. If time runs out, you may finish the sentence that you were speaking. There will be a timer that I'll be keeping here. Tonight, we do have a public hearing at 6:15, so public speak will be paused at 6:15 if necessary until the completion of that hearing. Once the public hearing has completed, we will resume public speak. Is there anyone now who would like to speak in this portion of the agenda on anything other that is not than what we are having a public hearing for? Please go ahead and raise your hand. Pat Bruff?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I can.
Thank you. My name is Pat Bruff. I live at 107 Briggs Street here in East Hampton. First and foremost, I'm a little bummed that Bill Lynch is not here tonight for this meeting. I think it's really important to go on the record when you want to talk about someone. I mean, I guess I could simply just go on Facebook and say a bunch of stuff about him, but I wanted this to be on his permanent record, so I figured doing it here would be the way to do that. I'd like to take a few minutes to thank Bill for his service to the city of East Hampton. Actually, I should start by apologizing to Bill. Back in 2017, I met and thought he would be a great councillor, so I supported Bill in his run for city council. For everyone that knows me, except for Joe McCoy oddly, if I endorse you, this means you're pretty much going to lose. Hence, I do not endorse anyone anymore. I was very happy to hear Bill was taking over for Dan Carey in 2019 and even more excited for Bill when he ran and won last year. Bill, if you see this, thank you. Thank you for the time commitment that was given to our city. Nobody truly knows what kind of time commitment it is to be a councillor until they are in it. A sign of a great city councillor is they are not afraid to take a stand for what they thought was the best for our city despite what others think. I've always trusted you did your homework and were doing what was best for the city, even if I thought you were crazy doing it. I am guessing the mayor and many of the department heads are a little bit happy that you will not be sitting in on the future budget meetings. They should not get too complacent, though, because I bet your love for this city does not end with your resignation, and you will be watching them and all of the numbers. Again, thank you, Bill, for everything you have done. Thank you for your countless hours you gave to the city. Thank you to your wife and kids for loaning you out during that time period. While the job as city councillor is often thankless during your tenure, I will end by saying loud and clear to you as you leave, thank you. Thank you for giving the courage to get out and meet and be the voice of the people from the city of East Hampton. Councillor, it truly was appreciated by all of us. Party on, Bill. Party on. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Any other folks? Wait, let me reset my clock. Any other folks who would like to speak now? Go ahead and raise your hand. I don't currently see anyone. Anyone on the screen? Okay. All right. Then we have a few minutes. We'll close out public speak. We have a few minutes before the public hearing starts. Is there anyone from the city council who would like to make any communications? I know there's a few of you who have reached out. Maybe we could sneak one of you in before the public hearing. Does anybody have anything they would like to speak to at this time? Councillor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. Just one second. I'm sorry. Desde el 15 de septiembre hasta el 15 de octubre, en los Estados Unidos celebramos el mes de la herencia hispana. Lo más que nunca sentimos orgullo, nos sentimos orgullosos de nuestra herencia como hispanos. Cuando hablamos de la herencia hispana, lo primero que se nos viene a la mente tal vez es la comida o la música. Pero se trata más que eso. Se trata de personas como Franklin Chandia de Costa Rica que llegó a Connecticut a los 18 años sin saber el idioma y por su perseverancia se graduó de la universidad y entró a NASA como astronauta donde participó de siete viajes al espacio. O como Carolina Herrera, una venezolana que por su amor a la moda se mudó a Nueva York y allí se convirtió en una de las más grandes diseñadoras de los Estados Unidos. O como Isabel Allende, una escritora chilena radicada en California, teniendo éxito con su carrera literaria. O como Sonia Sotomayor, la primera y única hispana en la Corte Suprema de los Estados Unidos. Uno incluye para nosotros los puertorriqueños y para toda la comunidad hispana. El propósito del mes de la herencia hispana es reconocer las contribuciones e influencias hechas por los hispanos en Estados Unidos. Qué bueno sería que fuera todo el año y no solo unos días que se reconociera lo mucho que nuestra comunidad ha aportado en este país. De esa manera, tal vez nos tomaría más en cuenta y hubiese menos discrimen, acoso y prejuicio contra nuestra comunidad hispana. Es importante que rompamos los mitos y barreras y empezamos a educarnos y abrir nuestra mente para entender otras culturas. Sí, hay mucha literatura y cursos para aprender en nuestra cultura, y sí es bueno que se lean libros y sistomy curso, pero la oportunidad para aprender en nuestra cultura hispana está más cerca que cualquier curso o libro. Cuando digo que está más cerca, me refiero a que estamos aquí, al lado de ustedes. No somos invisibles, aunque a veces así parece. También tenemos voz, aunque muchas veces no quieran callar. Estamos aquí, somos parte de la comunidad. Podría estar aquí toda la noche mencionando nombres de hispanos reconocidos en los Estados Unidos, y es que en los deportes, en las artes, en las ciencias, en la educación, en el gobierno, en la milicia y en muchas otras áreas, los hispanos hemos hecho contribuciones y vamos a seguir contribuyendo a este país, aunque lamentablemente no tengamos la representación justa. Y aquí un dato, en Massachusetts tenemos menos de 50 oficiales electos, que incluyen miembros del School Committee, pero si los miembros del School Committee solo seríamos menos de 30 oficiales electos en Massachusetts, y eso incluyendo senadores y legisladores estatales. Es por eso que le pido de por favor que no tomen decisiones por nosotros. Mejor incluyenos en las conversaciones. No piensen por nosotros. Mejor pregunten qué pensamos. Llevo años diciendo esto y lo segré repitiendo para que quede bien claro. Nosotros no estamos aquí para quitarle el trabajo a nadie. Estamos aquí para trabajar con ustedes. Gracias, Presidenta Coniff, por permitirme decir esta palabra en el idioma español que tanto amo. Now, I'm going to do a small version of what I said in Spanish, because I don't want to take a lot of minutes. From September 15 to October 15, the United States, we celebrate the Hispanic Heritage Month, and today, more than ever, we shall be proud of our heritage as Hispanic. When we talk about Hispanic heritage, most of the time, the first thing that came to our head is probably the food or the music, but it's more than that. It's people like Franklin Chandias from Costa Rica who came to Connecticut when he was 18, and he didn't know the language, and he graduated from the university and he entered to NASA. Or people like Carolina Herrera, a Venezuelan from the chill of the fashion, and she moved to New York to become the greatest designer in the United States. Or Isabel Allende, a Chilean, a writer Chilean based in California. Or Sonia Sotomayor, the first and only Hispanic in the Supreme Court in the United States, a pride of Puerto Ricans and the entire Hispanic community. The purpose of Hispanic Heritage Month is to recognize the contribution and the influence made by Hispanics in the United States. How good it would be if it was the whole year, not just a few days, that if there was a whole year, people would end discrimination, harassment and prejudice against our Hispanic community. It's really important that we break the myth and barriers and begin more education. There's a bunch of books and courses out there, but we are here. We are next to you. You should learn from us, that we are close to you. I could be all night mentioning names.
Thank you, Councillor Gomez.
Yes, just one sentence, and that's it. I've been saying this forever. Yeah, I've been saying this forever, and I just want to finish with this. We are not here to take any one job. We're here to work with you. Thank you, President Coniff. And if you give me just two minutes, we have here Shannon from the bike. If you can give me a minute, she can explain the program that we have.
Sure. Absolutely. Go ahead.
Thank you, Shannon. Thank you, President Coniff. Shannon, it's your time to talk if you want to say something.
You'll have to unmute, Shannon. There you go.
Great. Hi there. I don't know if Councillor Gomez was able to hand out the documents about the Access Pass Program, but that's what I'm here to talk about, is the Valley Bike Access Pass Program, which is a free membership for your residents who are eligible for any type of government benefits, SNAP, Mass Health, Section 8 housing. So we wanted to get the word out about this so that you can share it in your communities. It is an annual membership. Again, it's free, unlimited, one-hour-long rides so that people can get to appointments or get grocery shopping or whatever else they need, and you can go town to town. I don't know if you have had a chance to try out Valley Bike Share, but it is a really fantastic means of transportation, and this is a great opportunity for people who, you know, the buses aren't running as regularly as they were, so they can use this for other things. Councillor Gomez does have all of the paperwork, which includes a sign that can be put up in public buildings and housing authorities, any place where people would get assistance, and we are also able to take cash payments through our, of course, obviously, there is no payment right now, but if they are unbanked, they can send an application to our PO box. All of the information is actually on our landing page at www valleysbike.org. That's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you, Shannon.
Just to end, President Coniff, I just want to apologize to take more than three minutes. I really apologize about that.
Madam President, I move we open the public hearing.
And I don't know if it's my, excuse me, excuse me, excuse me. Hang on, guys. I don't know if it's my computer, but everyone is really kind of going really slow and it's a little choppy. So if it's just me, I'll deal with it, but if anyone else is having a real problem, let me know and we can maybe make some adjustments. Now I will take a motion to open the public hearing.
I move we open the public hearing.
Second.
It is your computer because you're just stopping and starting on my computer.
Okay. I don't have any issues. Okay. All right. Public hearing is now open. Do we want to go? We have zoning ordinance, Sam?
Peg, we didn't vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. Peg Coniff? Little discombobulated here. I can't hear you guys when you're all talking, so we will now take a vote. Go ahead, Barbara.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zera?
Yes.
Okay, public hearing is now open. Councillor Derby, do you want to start with the zoning ordinance?
Sure. Thank you, Madam President. So the first one up we have tonight is the request to amend Section 10.10 to allow cannabis cultivation, research and development, and new buildings in the highway business zoning district. Currently, our subcommittee is still talking about this issue, and so when we had set this public hearing, we knew that we probably wouldn't be ready for tonight, and so my intention is to continue this public hearing. But I figured since it was advertised that, you know, if anybody came here to speak to this issue, you know, I think it would be no problem for them to be able to speak to this now, and we will be meeting on this again to look at potential amendments to the recommendations that the planning board gave us, and also, we would need to run this by the city attorney.
Okay. Is there anyone from the public? Do you have, okay, is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment on this particular line item, which is the zoning ordinance amendment in the Highway Business District for cannabis? David, go ahead. Unmute yourself.
Thank you very much. My name is David Boquillan, and I actually live in Nashville, Tennessee. We're a part of the E-Harp Group, who has been proposing to do a cannabis research and development in retail project on the former Tasty Top's site. And I wanted just to say that, you know, the way the ordinance is being written is to be able to do it in a new building. And from our perspective is this, is the industry is changing very, very quickly. There are more stringent guidelines for testing of products. We just find for us, it's more advantageous to build a new building, state-of-the-art, rather than renovating an old. And I just wanted to put out, too, that, you know, the underlining guidelines through the CCC are really the guiding line, the guidelines for all of us that are playing the cannabis, in the cannabis business. So, you know, I have no problem with people putting it in an existing building. It just, we just feel it's better for the way that we cultivate to put it in a new one. And that's about, I just wanted to cover that topic there, since it was on your agenda.
Okay. Thank you, David. Danielle Martinow?
Yeah, I would like to say something, but before I do, I just have a few questions, if that's okay?
If we can answer them, we will.
Okay. My first question is, I know that it's still in the ordinance committee. Does that mean that there will be another public hearing, or is this the only public hearing for this amendment for city council?
I can say.
Councillor Derby, go ahead.
Yeah. So what we would be doing is continuing this public hearing, so there would be another public hearing.
Okay. Thank you. Well, so I do have something to say, but I'm wondering if it's just better to leave it for the public hearing, if it's still being amended. So I guess, so will you let the public, how will you let the public know, just so I can let other people know about it?
I'm planning on continuing this hearing until November 4th. And I will make that in a motion shortly, but that's when the next public hearing is going to be for this topic.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Oh, and so the other thing I wanted to say was, I'm not sure if Cot is on this, but he was having trouble logging in because of the link, and I know that he probably wants to speak, so I don't know, you know, if he's not on here, he probably would like to speak, so.
Cot is on. I see him. So Cot, I don't know if you want to say anything or if you want to wait until November 4th, but I do see that you're on. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Cot Cassam. I live at 170 Palmer Meadow Road in Southampton. The only thing that I want to speak about is pretty much going back to 2018 when we decide, when the city council decided to place and put into the ordinance about the 200-foot buffer from retail to retail. And my only issue is, is that back then, from what I understood, that buffer was in place in specific areas, so that way there would not be too many cannabis retailers next to one another, and it wouldn't congest one area and create a traffic flow for the residents of East Hampton or for the community. My only issue is that we're going to have an issue with the 200-foot buffer if a retail is placed in front of us. I mean, there's many other parcels that could be used for another retail or existing locations. There's plenty of places that need tenants that they could possibly choose from. That's my biggest issue there, and also with possibly an expansion cap, because with the changes to the zoning ordinance, it possibly could cap our expansion off because we didn't anticipate an expansion cap. We leased the space thinking that we'd be able to grow into it and grow upwards and not be capped at a specific amount. That's my concern.
Okay. Thank you, Cot. Anyone else who'd like to speak on this topic?
Yes. Hello? This is Attorney John Moriarty talking. I'm not sure you can see me.
John, excuse me. I recognized Rick Cernak right now, and then we will get to you. Is that all right?
That's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Rick Cernak. I live in Williamsburg, Mass, but I'm a property owner of the Cernak Field property across the street from Tasty Top. And from what I've seen, I would have to say, I want to put it on public record that I'm very much opposed to what I've seen so far for a plan to put a new building across the street for cannabis and to allow that in the first place. There have been compounded errors in this process that I'm not going to get into right now, but I'd be happy to give you a breakdown of that by email if anybody wants that. But I've been following this process throughout, along with the joint committee meetings, planning board and the subcommittee. One question I have that I'd like to present right now is, is there going to be another subcommittee meeting, the bylaws subcommittee meeting, before November 4th?
Yes.
I could say the ordinance committee, sorry.
Yes, we will meet before then.
When?
We haven't nailed down the date. I wasn't able to connect. It was supposed to actually be tonight, but our meeting last week got canceled, so this meeting superseded it, and we haven't been able to connect yet. But I'm thinking it will be either next week or the week after.
Okay. How will we find out?
It will be advertised and posted, and I think that if you shoot me an email, I can let you know as soon as we schedule it.
Okay. All right. So far, the plan that I've seen for what may be going into the Tasty Top parcel looks so much like industrial to me that I think it's unconscionable to consider that for the Highway Business District. And that's all I have to say right now.
Thank you, Rick.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else? John Moriarty, go ahead.
Thank you. My name is John Moriarty. I'm an attorney in Holyoke, Massachusetts. I represent Dennis Courtney, who was the owner of 93 to 97 North Hampton Street, which, of course, has the Tasty Top history to it. I'm speaking in behalf of Mr. Courtney, who is sitting with me, and we just want to make sure that you know that we are here and that we are very much in favor of the zone change. This is a process that's been going on in terms of development for about two years at this point. The development is something that would be extremely valuable to the city, and of course, obviously, you know, in my client's interest to sell his property, but also with a mind to doing so with the developer who is going to be here quite a long time in terms of the requirements of the investment. So we will save other comments for another time, but we wanted you to know that we're here and very much interested in the proceeding.
Thank you, John. Danielle, do you still, do you have your hand up again, or is that from the last time?
No, I have my hand up again, if it's okay, if I can speak.
Did you want to speak again?
Yeah. I just, I just want.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yes, so I just wanted to make sure that people knew where, so I am opposed to these changes. I'm not going to go into detail as well, because there's another hearing, but my main concern is that these changes do not fit within the city master plan as well as the Highway Business District final report that was made in 2013. And I just, I understand the economic benefit and the tax-based incentive to having these establishments in the highway business zone, but I think that the existing bylaws allow that to happen and do a really good job at balancing the need while also going within the current master plan. So whoever made those bylaw changes, I thought, did a really good job. So kudos to whoever did that, but I just feel like this just oversteps a lot. So thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Anyone else who'd like to speak on the zoning ordinance amendment? I'm going to read an email that I got that was requested that it be read during this particular public hearing. It is from Deborah August of Groveland Street, East Hampton. Dear President Coniff and councilors, I'm writing as a concerned citizen and neighbor from Groveland Street in the manner of the zoning and setback reconsider, reconsiderations for cannabis establishments in the North Hampton Street area. If these rulings are changed, it would give these establishments the right to build out, whereas initially using existing buildings and renovating them has been a great idea thus far. Building out near Groveland Street residential area would affect the entire neighborhood, our peaceful environment, and the extensive wildlife in this area. Traffic is still an ongoing concern to be considered, as well as the idyllic view from behind the former Tasty Top property. If the cannabis market becomes oversaturated, how will the new cultivation buildings be used in the future so that they do not remain vacant and still be affordable to new business? Thank you for considering all of the residential neighbors in the area and our environmental safety that exists now and in the future. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Sincerely, Deborah August. Right, Counsel Rist.
Just to comment and making sure that I'm correct, Counsel Derby, the only thing in front of us is the zone amendment, which allows for new construction, for construction of a new building for cultivation. The actual location and plan of the, of the buildings is not under our purview. Am I correct?
Yeah, you're absolutely correct. So we're, we're looking at a potential change that would basically strike the, the word new building, or existing building out of the ordinance. And there's, there's some, there's some wording that the planning board inserted that kind of makes it more restrictive. So it makes it part of a planned business development, which has much more stringent guidelines as far as how they can go in. But this is, this is a zoning change that would affect the entire highway business district. And it is not a zoning change for one particular property. It would affect the entire district.
Is setback included in this change?
Setback could be included. That's one of the things that we're discussing at the committee level.
Thank you, sir.
Looks like Jeff has his hand up.
Counsel, Counsel Bag, Jeff Bag.
Thank you. You know, I, I have an understanding of, you know, what Counsel Derby wants to do to bring this back to the ordinance subcommittee and, and back to this council meeting on November 4th. I, you know, I am a little bit taken aback by the lack of introduction of, of what actually is in front of the whole council. So I, I'm, no one seems interested to actually see the proposed language from which all the decisions have to be made from. So I just want to be clear that, you know, this information was included in the September 2nd packet of city council. So, you know, if you are interested in finding out more about this amendment as it's written, you have to go either to the September 2nd packet, or it's also posted from the city council page. The city council has a webpage, and there's a tab for proposed zoning amendments. And it was there that it was posted on August 27th. You know, I'm aware of questions about procedure, and I'm, I'm rather remiss to not talk about this a little bit before we continue off to November 4th. So I'm aware of some questions about advertising. And I believe that all the advertising requirements have been met, although I know that there's questions. So I don't know if it's important to go over some of that now. I'm aware of the letter from Ms. Martino that proposes a 250-foot buffer from buildings to property lines. So I would understand that that might be something that the ordinance subcommittee looks at, but you know, there's a, there's a rather long report that accompanies this. There are criteria that have been added to make sure that there are, there's oversight and guidelines for the planning board once there is an actual proposal. So I think, you know, I think it's, it's kind of, we kind of missed the actual presentation of the amendment as it, as it's written. So I don't know if it's important to go over that now at this point, but you know, there was a requirement to, to attach, to make sure that cultivation was accompanied by cannabis retail. That was one way to, to just address, you know, trying to meet the intent of the highway business, which is to bring people into an active space. There was a requirement that the, the site be five acres as a, as a minimum size. And there were a series of discussions about why that was put in place. There was a proposal to keep any cultivation building 75 feet at least from Route 10 as a way to create a separation from the building, to make sure that it would be far enough to not interrupt the character of Route 10. And then the, the, there is a maximum size of a single cultivation building, which was capped at 25,000 square feet. And there were a bunch of, there's a bunch of data and information to, to rationalize that. And I think for people, the, for, for comparison, 25,000 square feet building is large. And River Valley Co-op is our, is our best example. River Valley Co-op, which is under construction, also on Route 10, is 23,000 square feet. So there are, you know, there are, there's language, and there has been, you know, multiple hearings to get to this point. So the planning board's role is to report the, the language to city council, and then this hearing starts. So I just feel like maybe the, the quick overview of what is actually in front of the council was, was maybe missed.
Yeah, and, and just to, to be clear, that was, that was something, since we were planning on continuing this, that was something that would, I was kind of saving for the, the hearing where we were going to vote on it, which was the, the full-scale introduction. And just, also just for reference, currently right now, a building, the cap size for a building in highway business is 50,000 square feet for any other building. So just as some perspective.
Anyone else have any comments related to this? Counsel Rothschild.
Hi, Jeff, thank you for getting a little more context. And, you know, as a counselor, trying to really think about if this is something good for the city, I did really appreciate, on September 2nd, you really provided us with lots of information in terms of, and also lots of video links to all the different meetings where this was discussed. So that was really helpful. Because in the context of this meeting, I feel like, you know, I'm hearing from residents or that are concerned, but I do know those residents live right next to the proposed site, or have a business right across. And then I hear people for it, and I know they have a lot of financial gain as a result of this, of this particular project. So I'm really trying to think of this in a really objective way, and so I'm going to be returning to the information that you provided before, Jeff, and really think about how it, you know, will benefit the city in that area. And I do think that the, having the retail aspect is an important component, that it is something that people can visit and buy things, buy products. It's not just an industrial building. So I just wanted to say thank you for the wider context, and just let you know how I'm thinking about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Rothschild. Counsel Zarek.
Thank you, President Coniff. Just to kind of pull together some of the comments I made here, and I also agree with Counsel Rothschild. I wanted to thank Planner Bag for all the work I know he had done on this, both in terms of preliminarily bringing the language to us, as well as early discussions in ordinance, and then the joint public hearings we have with the planning board. I apologize, I, I was under the impression we were going to take public comments and then get into more of an introduction. So I'm sorry, Mr. Bag, if it's, if that wasn't properly introduced. I thought we were going to get to it later on. I know there's some members of the public here who wanted to speak about this first. You know, one thing that's been brought up, I think Counsel Rothschild touched on it, as did Counsel Rist, that the proposal's very confusing, especially when you listen to input from the public. And for, for those of you who may be listening to this for the first, first time, this is not a zoning change for a particular single parcel, even though that, that proposal might be an example of how the zoning could be played out. But it's a blanket discussion about application of new cultivation building in the highway business district, and it's important for us to remember that for the sake of this discussion. Some of the discussion that's being had is more on the planning board level. It, this had, this, what we're seeing already tonight is some of the kind of complicated intertwining of issues that have come up during our discussion, which is why some of these conversations have been so complicated, as well as with a, another business that's been interested in establishing near to a proposed business site. But again, there are multiple sites within the highway business district, as Planner Bag has so very well showed us in the packet. So that's just something that's important to remember. I, I do think that there have been some salient comments about if this sort of language were to pass, what that would look like if a business were to establish at the Tasty Top site. But I, I encourage people to zoom out a little bit to 20,000 feet and look at the, the entirety of the application of this, rather than to just one parcel, because I think that complicates the discussion.
Thank you, Counsel Zarek. Anyone else who would like to speak on this topic? I don't see any hands. Counsel Derby. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Hang on one second. Danielle, did you want to make another comment?
Yeah, thank you. I think as, as somebody who has been following these meetings since I heard about them, which was the late of July, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend the public hearing, because I didn't know about it for the planning board. But as somebody who has been following these meetings and have been attending these meetings, I do find it really confusing, because this proposal, what this zoning change was fueled by a proposal. So that's what makes it really confusing, is, you know, is this because of a proposal? Or is this something that East Hampton wants as a larger picture? And when I think about what these, as a resident, and as somebody who lives on this street, and somebody who works and lives here, I am really concerned about what this would look like for North Hampton's street. Like, for any business to expand, marijuana cultivation to expand on the highway business. I've done a lot of research about it. I'm definitely not biased about it, because I support marijuana cultivation. I support the industry. But I just don't see how it can fit in the, how this, this size building for marijuana cultivation. Other businesses make sense. Like you said, a 50,000-square-foot business, if it's not a cultivation center, which is industrial in nature, I don't think it, it makes, you know, that, those types of businesses that are high-traffic, that generate a lot of traffic, makes sense in a highway business. But a cultivation center doesn't generate a lot of traffic. And by just plopping a retail building on the property and saying, oh, look, we have something that we're selling, I think, I just think is a cover-up. So I guess, so as a resident, I do think a lot about the larger picture. And I still don't think that there's a compelling argument to say that this is something that fits in a highway business zone. I think if it was a different zone, it would be a different conversation, but we're talking about highway business. So that's, so I just wanted to say that, so thank you.
Thank you, Danielle. Brenda Salyer. Brenda, you're on mute. There you go.
Sure am, there. Can you hear me?
Now we can, yep.
Thank you, Brenda Salyer, Precinct 5 and Planning Board member. I'll reserve the majority of my comments for the next public hearing, but two things I just want to encourage the city council to think about is if you can, if you have time to review the Highway Business District report to, so that, you know, you're familiar with the zoning along that district and what's allowed, what isn't allowed, that might be really helpful to you. And then second, I have been really concerned about, echoing Danielle, the history of this change. I don't support it. You'll, you'll find that out more later, but you know, I sat through hours of joint hearings on this issue, and you know, I asked many times, where did this come from? And, you know, we were all encouraged to just think about it more globally in terms of the whole district, and that it really didn't have much to do with, you know, a upcoming applicant. And so, you know, in the last two meetings, I've discovered that, in fact, there's a pending application that's about two years old, and it's been ongoing. And I just have never been able to divorce myself from how this proposal got started. And, you know, I have to ask myself, if there wasn't a pending applicant pushing for this, would anybody be talking about it? Would, would anybody even be concerned about it? And I, I just don't think anybody would. What, what the board decided, what the council decided two years ago, I think it was brilliant, and it's working brilliantly to help us sort of reclaim some abandoned sites. So I just really want people to think about the history of this and the optics of it, but not just the optics, but, you know, the actuality of it. And I don't think the city should look like it's trying to make changes that support an applicant. And to me, that's what it kind of looks like, and that just really bothers me. So thank you for listening. I really appreciate your time, and I'll see you at the next hearing.
Thank you, Brenda. I saw Brendan Leith was next. Go ahead, Brendan, take yourself off mute.
Hello. My name is Brendan Leith. I'm at 89. Mute it. Sorry. I'm in the same household as Danielle Martino at 89 North Hampton, so you're hearing an echo from that. I just wanted to echo some of Brenda's comments. I, I, I'm coming from the same place. I feel like I'm, I'm very uncomfortable with how this was brought up, and, and Jeff Cernak said something at an earlier meeting that really stuck with me. He basically said, if this is not connected to a specific plot or proposal, then we could just table it for two or three years. And it didn't seem like, it seemed like everyone was in a rush for it to come through. And I'm just, I'm not comfortable with that. And I just, I feel like when you're dealing with a building that's 23,000 square feet, you're dealing with a lot of industrial gases. You're dealing with a lot of environmental impact, and it just seems so much better suited for a industrial zone. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Mayor, I saw your hand go up earlier. Did you have something you'd like to add?
Yes, please. I would like on the public record, an extreme exception from my office indicates any untoward conduct by our city planner or any member of the city government. We don't pick and choose. We've worked on this project for two years, just like we worked on the, on the project that the same applicant from across the street put for us as we waited and worked for him for several months. The, the reality is, the 2008 master plan is exactly that, 2008. And any bylaw work that was done around this section or this industry was done in a cloud of uncertainty. Route 10 is a major issue for the city, and it cannot become Route 9. I appreciate the, the city council and the, and the planner to catch this for any involved business on Route 10 and appropriately zone. I know that there are some people speaking in the public who well know the spot zoning and inconsistent zoning throughout this city. If there is an opportunity to fix that, then it should be done. But please do not cast dispersions on any city employee or untoward, possibly illegal activity, because it is not sure. It surely is not the truth, and I take grave exception to it. Any developer is welcome to come to my office and sit down with our leaders to talk over a project. You don't have to, but if you want to, we're there. And we have talked to all of the business stakeholders on both sides of Route 10. We've been down this route before, Route 10, two families across the street. This is about a zoning change. This is about doing due diligence. And I would just ask members of the council and also the subcommittee to remember that, as well as the planning board. Thank you.
Peg, I don't know if it's, if it's, but just for time's sake, I, I think that it might make sense for us to call this vote, so I can continue this hearing, so we can move on to some of the other stuff we have tonight. I just see this going on forever at this point.
If there's no, if there's no objection from the council, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
No objection.
Okay. So I would like to move to continue the public hearing for amending Section 10.10 to allow cannabis cultivation research, development of new buildings in the highway business. business zoning district to November 4th at 6:15.
Okay.
Motion is second to continue the public hearing on the cannabis highway business zoning district ordinance to November 4th at 6:15. Any conversation? Councilor Zaret.
Counselor and Chairperson Derby of ordinance is, do you think there's any relevance at this point, just to give an overview of what we discussed at the last meeting or just so people know where we're at? Or do you think they should just come to the next meeting? I'm just thinking out loud.
I'm thinking, I think at this point, just given the, you know, the time we spent on this already, it probably just makes sense for us to, to move on. And, and, you know, I, I think that if they want to be part of that, which I think is great, then come to the ordinance committee meeting and then to the November 4th meeting as well. So there should be two opportunities for people to speak after this as well and to learn.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right, Barbara. Ilum Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Hi.
AP Kuzinski.
Alabstain.
Tom Peak.
Hi.
Dan Rist.
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Yes.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Hi.
All right, motion passes and it has been continued. Thank you, Councilor Derby. I believe you have another one, Councilor Derby for.
You get me again. You get me again. So, and this one has been a long time coming and, and I'm really happy to be able to bring this forward. And I want to just say thanks to Councilor Zaret for, for bringing this forward. So what we have is an upgrade to our thin plastic bag ordinance. You know, we, we did have an ordinance that required places that used in plastic bags to have recycling. That proved to be difficult for enforcement. Our previous health, health agent was not interested. And so we went back to the drawing board to, to bring our zoning regulations around plastic up to the standards of some of the surrounding communities and kind of the momentum at, at national level. And for a good reason, you know, our oceans are drowning in plastic at this point. Microplastics can be found pretty much everywhere. All of us have microplastics in us because of the food that we eat. Plastic doesn't degrade. It, it doesn't degrade. It breaks down and becomes really small. And so anything that we can do on the municipal level to help, you know, make an impact on, on the environment and a positive impact on the environment, I think is really important. But before I go too far, I think I'd like to let Councilor Zaret speak to this since he was the sponsor.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Derby. And, you know, one thing I want to say is I want to give a lot of credit to, this is only my, the middle of my second term and a lot of the work I've done around environmental issues like this, I owe to all the trailblazing that Councilor Derby has, has done. And I don't think I would have the success with some of this that I've had were it not for all the work he's done. So thank you, sir. I also wanted to thank Council Rothschild, who did some preliminary work when we early on and worked with some of the businesses in the area, both to educate them and poll them about the, the plans for this. The way the municipalities have, have approached plastics have typically been piecemeal. They've passed ordinances around plastic bags and then separately around plastic and single use takeout containers and utensils. And additionally, what, one thing we haven't really seen a lot of discussion around, at least here in the Northeast or certainly Massachusetts as much as, is straws. I feel that these discussions kind of all go hand in hand. Whether you're talking, these are, as, as Council Derby so eloquently said, these things are all plastic. They don't, they don't, they don't degrade. They're not compostable. And what they do to our environment ultimately is horrible for our earth and ultimately for us and all, all the people who consume food that's grown in this earth as well as the animals that live here. So the intention was to kind of approach this as a, by addressing all of those issues. Non-degradable plastic bags, single use plastics, with takeout containers as well as straws. The language with straws, because of the technology available right now, straws are very important tools for people who have certain disabilities that prevent them from being able to easily consume liquids. And unfortunately, right now, especially, plastic straws are sometimes the best option. So we do not want to completely take those away. We want to make those available on request. This, the, the ordinance has been reviewed by both the Sierra Club as well as the Connecticut River Conservatory and the Sunrise Movement as well. And they've all approved of it and endorsed it. Very simply, I'll, I'll just kind of give it a quick rundown. Essentially what would this, this would do is eliminate all plastic bags, all thin film plastic bags and replace them with either paper or asking people to use reusable bags. It would eliminate, uh, single use plastic containers, polyethylene containers for takeout purposes or single use purposes as well as utensils and ask that people use compostable, compostable containers. There are certain criteria that would certify. There's this ABA STM criteria as you read in the ordinance that basically certifies what can and can't be used. And for both these categories, but really mostly for a single use takeout, we did recognize that, for instance, you know, certain businesses may not have access due to the current technology of suitable containers for certain liquids, for instance, or whatnot. And so there are exemptions and I think they're very business friendly in terms of thinking about how we can certainly do our best to move forward environmentally conscious way, but also thinking about not making this onerous on the businesses. This also does address other kind of plastic bag uses like, things like dry cleaning and newspapers, which I think piggybacks also off, well off of a prior ordinance. I think that Council Derby was involved in involving the problem that these, these newspaper bags end up all over the place except for your front porch. And then straws, as I noted, instead of just having a bunch of straws available and just given to you, which again ended up in places typically other than the trash. And even if they do, they have undesirable consequences. Plastic straws are available on request. And then additionally, businesses are encouraged to also use non-plastic alternatives for straws. So again, thank you, Council Derby for paving the way. Thank you, Council Rothschild for the work you did canvassing businesses. And she and I also did attend something way before the pandemic when people went out in the world with this wonderful program called Bag Share where people are using, reusing grain bags to, and, and other similar bags like that to make them into reusable bags. It's something I'd, I'd like going forward to be able to see to bring to the city. Something else to note about the ordinance too, I'll stop in a second. I apologize, but I just wanted to give an appropriate overview. This ordinance won't go into effect for a year, so we have a lot of time to participate both in coordination with the health department, education of our businesses, helping them find vendors, et cetera, and really work with the community to make sure this is something that works and isn't just thrust upon them. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilors Zaret. Is there anyone, any city councilors who have any questions first? Okay, I have a question. Was there any, did you guys receive any feedback from, maybe it's to Council Rothschild? I'm not sure. What kind of feedback did you get from the businesses who may or may not be impacted by the change to this ordinance? Do, do they anticipate increase, increased costs in retrofitting themselves to this ordinance? Or was there any kind of feedback on that? Council Rothschild?
This seems so long ago. It was like right before the pandemic. It was like, it was the last ordinance meeting I went to was the week before the pandemic. Anyway, I went up and down Cottage and, and Union and I only got positive. I didn't get anyone that was against it. There was, a lot of the response I got was like, oh, I was planning on making, first of all, the first chip response I got was people already are using what's going to be in the ordinance. So they're like, oh, they were proud to show me they already are using those things. Then there was other businesses like Casara, for example, that said, oh, we've been meaning, we've been wanting to change. We've been meaning to, you know, they just might have some problem finding something for the hot liquids, but we're explaining that if they can't, like Councilor Zaret said, there is an exemption. But, so the people that didn't, weren't over yet were like, kind of like, they knew it was coming and they wanted to, and this was kind of giving them the nudge. And I went to the Big E and I talked to Mike Superset, the owner, and he at that time said, oh, guess what? Well, the Earth Day was coming up and they were going to announce at that time that they were going to eliminate bags anyways. He said, we know it's coming. Big Wire already did it. So like Councilor Zaret mentioned, I wanted to, I think, due to the work that was done prior, like Council Derby and other environmental activists in town, that I know when it came up last time, there was a lot more resistance, but times have just moved along and to the point that people were kind of just, they, you know, they're a little concerned about the cost, but overall really supportive. And, and, and I think it's important to note that recycling is the last thing you want to do. First, you want to reduce, reuse, recycle. So hopefully we can mark a cultural shift where we're just using less. So if they have to buy more expensive things, hopefully they have to use, buy less of it. Like, you know, whether they sell like a mug, like Union Bistro, where you come in, you get your, you say mug refilled, that a cultural shift can start happening. So I honestly didn't hit any negativity. I was ready and didn't hit it. I don't know if they did in the ordinance meetings, but.
Great to hear. Thank you, Council Rothschild. Councilor Zaret.
The only, I'd say, opposition we had and, and Councilors Peak and Derby, correct me if I'm wrong, is we did have a couple restaurant owners from, uh, Veracruz Donna and Pokeball came to one of our, I think it was our last live meeting. I, I wouldn't say it was resistance. I think they were mostly concerned and this goes back to discussing exemptions. I think they were worried about some of their smaller liquids and kind of condiment cups that might've been eliminated with the ordinance. And I think once we discussed, at least to my recollection, once we discussed that there would be exemptions for these sorts of things, as long as they're, they could prove that there wasn't a really suitable alternative, I, I believe that they were satisfied to, at least to my, my recollection.
And, and I can add to that. It would, I believe it was, it's either bubble tea or boba tea or it's like a, it's like a drink that has like large tapioca balls in it. And they were concerned that they couldn't find a straw for that. But I mean, a quick Google search shows that there are a lot of different kind of sustainable straws that are for that size. So that was one thing. And then if they couldn't find it, or if it was, if it was price prohibitive, they would be able to apply for an exemption.
Councilor Peak.
Yeah, sort of to echo what Council Derby said, you know, one, one of the things that we did later, later in the process of, of this whole thing was work a little bit with the exemption process. So it's, you know, I mean, I think most of the concerns that we got were people being like, we are not sure that something like what we need currently exists. And there certainly will be individuals that that, I mean, inevitably there will be some people that's true for. This is set up in a way so that those people can come and say, we have to keep doing this. This is what we're looking for. And they can bring that to the health department and it's, you know, they're able to go forward. So, you know, I think with, that was, that was sort of how we specifically responded to the few concerns that we did get. And I, I think that, that gives people the flexibility to, to do what they need to do, but also encourages them to seek out, you know, more sustainable options.
Great. Anyone else? Anyone from the public would like to make, oh, I'm sorry. JP, did you have your hand up?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, I couldn't see it.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Council Kuzinski.
I'd like to thank the ordinance committee for their hard work on this. I remember probably about, what seems like about two years of meetings at the last go around when I served with Council Derby and Councilor Tamara Smith, who, where we all worked very hard to put that first ordinance together. There were, I'm so glad to hear that there appears to be less resistance in the community. I know when we traveled the streets, there was lots of concern. And of course, it was, it was new for the city. There was concern that the folks in other communities who didn't have the ordinance, the business would go to them since they're, and we would lose business. But I think so, I voted for it because I think there were so many prevailing reasons to vote for it. One of the concerns is to make sure we have the proper carve outs in the ordinance, the exemptions. And so I was just wondering if anyone could comment on the restaurant, the styrofoam takeouts. I know that there is a great offender, but it seemed to be mentioned several times at the last go around because when you go for a takeout, geez, you could ruin the whole bag and the meal gets spilled if anyone tips the, the bag. So how are we dealing with, with that as an issue for our restaurants? Anybody?
Well, I think Owen can take this. He's really.
Councilor Zaret.
Just to clarify, Council Kuzinski, are you saying how are we, how are we accommodating to replace the, the traditional styrofoam containers?
I think that's an important question to be sure that the, I know at, at the time we discussed it, the plastic, I'm sorry, the paper alternatives were of such poor quality that they would disintegrate and dissemble before somebody traveled home with the food that they purchased. So I know that a lot of folks were interested in seeing there be a plastic alternative, which provided a degree of cleanliness and frankly, food that wouldn't be returned or wasted.
Yep, though that's an excellent question, Council Kuzinski. And so I guess the one thing I'll point to is that, as Council Rothschild noted, many of our, many of our restaurants are already basically using compostable alternatives to, to polystyrene already. Just off the top of my head, I want to say, and I'm not, if I miss anybody, I apologize. I'm just trying to think really quickly. I think Daily Operations Small Oven, I think Coco, those are the ones that jumped to my mind and there's probably more. They're all using a cardboard paper, non-polystyrene containers. And there have been no issues. Certainly probably since the last discussion around this, and even on a month to month basis, there's, there's more and more, I mean, this, this has basically become an industry and there's more and more compostable alternatives that work just as well to keep in fluids as the more traditional styrofoam containers. So yes, I totally agree with you. What good is passing a law that basically causes you to end up with a puddle on the floor of your car when you get home from your takeout? So we don't want that. So, but I will assure you that the technologies, the container technologies that are available are, are great. Many of them are already employed in our city and they're, they seem to work well.
That's great. Thank you. And I look forward to the restaurants using the types of containers that provide sustainability for our community.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public have any comments on this particular issue? I'm not seeing any, any other city councilors have any. Council Gomez.
Thank you, President Coniff. First, I want to say thank you to Council Owen and Council Derby and Council Rothschild for this hard work. I think it's really important to take care of, of our work. It's a lot of contamination out there and the plaxis definitely is one of them and probably the biggest one. But I just want to add that the city, they cannot do it all. I think it's a combination of city ordinance laws and effort from the community. Every time that we go to the supermarket, we can bring the, the reusable bags, but it's a bunch of plastic that we're going to put inside those bags. And it's our job to try to reduce those plastic use. So it's an effort that everybody have to do, including driving. So it's an effort that everybody have to do, including driving cars, you know, is hybrid cars out there, is electric car out there. So we as a community, we as humans, we have to know that the earth is suffering. And it's time for everybody to react and react now. Because if we want to give it a better word for our childrens or our grandsons or grandkids, we have to react now. Again, thank you for the councils, for the hard, for our hard work and this ordinance. But definitely is a work of everybody. Everybody have to be in board, on board. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gomez. One last call for councilors to have a question or anyone from the public. Counselor Derby or Counselor Zarek, who will be making the motion?
I can, I can make it. And, and just for the record, this passed ordinance subcommittee three to zero. And it has also been reviewed by the city attorney. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to delete in its entirety the existing, existing section 6.21, thin plastic bag ordinance and replace it with the new section 6-21, prohibition of single-use plastic bags, disposable food containers and straws.
Second.
Motion and a second to replace and delete 6.21 in the ordinances for single-use plastic bags and replace it with the entirety of this lovely ordinance you have created. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Okay.
Motion passes. Excellent. Thank you, everyone. That was wonderful. And we have one more item for our public hearing, and that is a supplemental appropriation, Counselor Rist.
Thank you, Madam President.
Here we go, three.
Well, there's three, yes. Forty, the first one is $46,000, which the Finance Committee approved two to zero for new preliminary design services associated with the upgrade and reconfiguration of the Parson and Ferry Street intersection. This intersection has been a problem in the, for a long time. And what's exciting about this particular appropriation and the next one is that we're using the cannabis impact fee stabilization account to pay for it. Now, just to educate the public, we get a 3% impact tax, I'll shall I say, it's a fee, that cannabis retail must give to the city. That's on top of the 3% we get as an excise tax. The cannabis impact fee cannot be used for general fund expenses. It has to be used for those items, those particular projects that are related to the impact cannabis retail has on the city. And I want to compliment the mayor and the administration for using this fee in a very good way to improve public safety in the area, in this case Ferry Street where Insa, the cannabis retail is located, and the next one on Route 10. This use of this fee is, is, I don't know if it's going to be difficult to find reasons for it. I know we can do it around public safety and other items, but I'm always excited to see that we can, I'm excited, I think these are the first projects since we've been able to accumulate this fee that we're able to do. So this design is long in coming, and I can't wait to see it configured and done. If councilors have any questions about it, it is a design for Parsons and Ferry Street. You may ask, please, Jeff Bag, or I know if Greg Nudelman is still on the call, or Diane is here too, please ask them. They have more information about the actual design. But yes, I'm very excited about this. Counselor Gomez, Peg. Did you?
Would anyone like, oh, I'm sorry?
You're breaking up, Peg. Counselor Gomez has his hand up.
Dan, I didn't hear whatever you said.
Oh, boy. You're breaking up and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we're not, we're seeing you in. So Counselor Gomez, I'm going to take over just until you fix that, I guess.
Thanks, thank you, Mr. Vice President. First, I just want to say thank you to the city planner and the mayor to put the eyes on District Two. Since I've been in city council, I've been complaining about those intersection, especially Parson and Ferry Street. I'm really happy that we are, that the city is, is making the first step to the right direction. And I just excited the District Two is going to look better. Thank you.
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, now we can.
Okay. I see a internet upgrade in my future. Any, Diane or Greg, did you have anything you wanted to add to what Counselor Rist has stated? Or would you prefer to wait until someone has a specific question? Okay, all right. Any, any councilors have any questions on this? Counselor Zarek?
Would it be possible to get a really brief overview of this from the planner or someone else involved? Or just like a little bit more edification and also to show off their, their work and thought?
Planner Bag, you want to go ahead?
Sure. It is a team effort, for sure. So this, this intersection has been on a couple of lists. It started with the Complete Streets prioritization list in 2017, if, if not before that. But it really made it on that list for pedestrian safety upgrades, as well as it's a, it's a conflict intersection, turning left off of Parsons and on the Ferry. And, you know, I think with the, with the, the success of Insa has definitely brought increased vehicle traffic through that route. So that's the route, if you get off on 17B and you're going over the mountain, you take East Street, you take Parsons Street, and then you're, you're trying to get to Insa. And this is a, this is a really concerted effort with the mayor and DPW to, to focus on this and, and really tackle this intersection as one of the first projects coming out of the cannabis impact fees. You know, the, 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 the requirement is that it's reasonably connected to some potential impact from, from a cannabis dispensary. And I am personally very proud of this. I'm proud of working with the mayor and Greg and Diane. Dan Murphy was also involved in this and securing the quote from VHB, you know, a while ago. So the, the goal is to, to use the funds for a design process. And then as a result of that, we should get a cost estimate and obviously a depiction of what the intersection upgrade would look like. There's some outreach that would need to have, have to happen once we have the plan. But the overall goal is to consider funding the actual construction with the cannabis impact fees as well. You know, I think everybody hears it, you know, everybody has an area of East Hampton that they, they need an upgrade of some sort. And this is really just another example of really trying to look at the need and try to establish the funding source that can solve the need. This project hits a lot of high points because it'll complement and abut the, the Ferry Street Mass Works improvements. So we'll have, in, in a couple of years, we'll have a continuous upgraded pedestrian access in that area. And it also complements our, our looking ahead with community development block grant funds for the Parsons Street neighborhood. So, you know, it's, it's really, you know, I think as Counselor Gomez said, it's, it's really just a concerted effort on trying to look at that whole area. And then, you know, for the Ferry Street, ultimately, there is a bike path connection that would make it a lot easier for folks in Parsons Street to get to the, to the bike path. And if we were not fixing this intersection, we would be left with a really big problem there. So I think it's a, it's a really good example of what we, we can be looking to do with the cannabis impact fees over time.
Thanks, Jeff. Anyone else? Any other questions? Counselor Zarek.
Sorry, just regarding cannabis impact fees, is there any, is there any sort of documentation to justify the, the use thereof? Or if you basically give a reasonable explanation as to how the, the monies are being used in a way to address areas that may be impacted by the cannabis industry? Is that enough? Does the state require any sort of documentation? Or is it more kind of a good faith thing? And I'm, I'm, just to clarify, I'm not questioning this because I think this is the perfect use of these monies. I'm just trying to understand the process more as well as kind of ask this for the public as well, who may be wondering.
I think it, I'll, I'll take a stab. I mean, I think it's a two-step, two-step process. So, so the way the account got set up, my understanding is that city council will have the, the approval of appropriations out of the account. And then going back to sort of the Cannabis Control Commission, they are, they have evolved their own process. And so my understanding is that when a, when a licensee seeks renewal every year, that, that they're, they're supposed to request some documentation from the city about impacts. And so our take on it right now is that we're still assessing impacts. You know, so for something like Insa that has been operating for, you know, two years, it's still really unclear exactly what the impacts will be. This is, this is a very obvious one. So I don't think it's out of the realm of possibility that you'll see, you know, a request for appropriation for us to, to get consulting help to help us continue to evaluate and monitor what we see as impacts from, from cannabis going forward. It's probably something that falls more in the mayor's office. But I think, you know, if you take the fire department, DPW, the planning department and inspection services, and probably the health department, you know, at some level cannabis has, has, you know, it penetrates those offices and to evaluate those impacts and how, how to, you know, what is happening is something that we're still exploring.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Are we ready to vote, Counselor Rist?
I, I believe so, Madam President.
Okay.
I move that the city council approve a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $46,000 to be transferred from, from Fund 87 Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Account to be transferred to Parsons and Ferry Street Intersection Capital Project, $46,000. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, preliminary design services associated with the potential upgrade and reconfiguration of the Parsons and Ferry Street intersection.
Second.
Second.
Motion and a second for supplemental appropriation of $46,000 for the design and reconfiguration of the Parsons and Ferry Street intersection. Any further conversation? Barbara?
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Tom?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Motion passes eight to zero. Dan?
Yes, the next one is also a cannabis impact fee stabilization account appropriation of $25,000. The planning department through, the director Bag has requested a change order that would allow for the installation of rectangular rapid flashing beacons for a crosswalk between the Cumberland Farms gas station and store and the new co-op. They've already been installed, and this is a way to pay for that. And I'm excited again because there is cannabis being, we all, we are already discussing it on Route 10. And traffic will increase because of that. And this particular item was requested just to make it a little safer to walk across a very busy street. And Finance Committee approved it two to zero. I just want to make a comment, this is just personal for me, but that entire Route 10 business area has always been a problem for me with the amount of left turns that are created with the amount of traffic that existed prior to cannabis. And now with two or three or four retail stores planned for that area, if we can use this funding, and I'm, I'm giving this to Jeff for the future, to improve that street so that maybe left turn, turning lanes can be added. I, I think that, that traffic is going to increase, but it, it would be bad, it would be bad no matter what kind of businesses is installed. If we ever had the Stop and Shop, for instance, that was planned years ago, that would be a traffic issue. But at least now, we have the potential of this impact fee stabilization account to perhaps pay for some of this improvement on that street. And I'm just saying it as a personal aside because this particular item strikes a nerve in me. Yes, we can improve the safety of that street. And if we now have a fund that'll help us pay for it, I'd like the city to consider it. But in any case, if you have any questions about this, this is a rather simple pedestrian safety improvement. I guess you should direct them to, to Jeff about it. As I said, the Finance Committee approved it two to zero.
Does anyone on the council have any questions? Counselor Kuzinski?
About to say Counselor Bag, Planner Bag.
For the second time, we've made.
I will direct a question to you. And it has to do with funds available for the development and pedestrian bicycle traffic, et cetera, that occurs when new businesses come to the district. The River Valley Co-op and Cumberland Farms, both are new to, to that area. There will be pedestrian and bike traffic. Are we, do we not have something in our regular zoning where the planning board can look at the traffic data and say, you know, one of the requirements is we need the type of item which we're going to hopefully pay for with the cannabis funds because it's appropriate because of the overall increased traffic? But I'm thinking that not only for Route 10, but for our entire community, do we have in place what we need?
No, I don't think we do. You know, the zoning ordinance applies to private property mainly. So, so there is a way, you could talk to a, a development or a developer about like a sidewalk on their property. But it goes, it goes, you know, you can't really push too far for other improvements that go beyond the site development. I mean, it always comes down to cost and what a developer can absorb into their project. With the River Valley Co-op, I mean, I think we, that's why I think we were successful with the Mass Works grant. We were awarded $394,000 to support those road, those road improvements because we looked at city funds, you know, and DPW does a great job with every, every dime that they have. But there's no way that DPW had $400,000 to make those improvements, nor did River Valley Co-op. So it was really this compelling argument that we made to Mass Works that, you know, this is the final, the final bit of funding necessary to make the co-op happen. Because without the turning lane and without the pedestrian improvements, the co-op really might not have come to fruition. But so I think it's kind of long-winded. The tools that we're trying to, trying to use are the DIF. So the city council a couple, two years ago passed the DIF district on Ferry Street. And believe it or not, we're still kind of working out how that's going to work. That would be a tool, it's been discussed on Route 10 for, for consideration if, if there is, if there are vacant parcels on Route 10 that have very little assessed value, and then they're redeveloped. If you had a DIF district, you could take the, some of that revenue and, and use it for public infrastructure. So that would be one of the tools that we're not currently using. And I think just real quick on the rapid flashing beacons, I think it's really becoming the norm for pedestrian safety improvements. And we were maxed out with our Mass Works grant, and it was really someone who said, oh, I hope those flashing beacons are part of that crosswalk. And it was really sort of an aha moment where we circled back. They were not in the plans. But by, by putting it in the project, the contractor was able to do it while they're out there. And now we're, we're looking for the funding to, to fund that. But it is really.
I thank you for, for that. And just wanted to keep that in mind as something that if there's anything we can do on zoning area issues or anything else we can do, that would be helpful. There are many folks who I think would like to see the cannabis impact fees used. They're a great source for the community to, to, to reduce the impact. And if we have other resources available, I would like to propose we promote those other resources to be sure we're doing everything possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Any questions from the public? Okay, seeing none, Counselor Rist?
Okay, I will make a motion that the full city council approve a supplemental appropriation of $25,000 to be transferred from Fund 87 Cannabis Impact Fee Stabilization Account to be transferred to Mass Works Route 10 Improvement Account. The amount requested will be used for the following purpose, for the installation of pedestrian safety improvements on Route 10, mainly rectangular rapid flashing beacons. mainly rectangular rapid flashing beacons.
Second, uh, on behalf of the residents of Precinct One. Thank you.
Motion and a second for the supplemental appropriation of $25,000 for pedestrian safety improvements on Route 10. Any further conversation? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Yes.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Yes.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Yes.
Motion passes. Uh, we have one more, Counselor Wrist.
Yes, this is, uh, exciting. And I know Counselor Derby was excited about it because it deals with infrastructure improvement in the new city area. Uh, during our finance committee, uh, meeting, uh, Greg Nudelman, our DPW director, mentioned that this area, the, uh, infrastructure, this in that area is very old, was built by the mills way in and not up to what we would call the right standards. Cause they did what they had to do and I guess, uh, minimally. This particular, um, appropriation is a 25% match from a grant we received, a $175,937 grant. And that 25% is, uh, for the 60,000 is for the total amount required. Um, and rather get too deep into it, uh, you can read the entire appropriation. There's a lot in there. But I'll let Jeff and Greg speak to it or Diane if you'd like. Um, if you'd like to speak to it, whoever would like to, uh, we approved it two to zero and I'm excited about it for New City. Greg?
Yep. All I would have to add is it was just a great thing for the DPW and the, the city as a whole to get awarded this grant money. And the funding that we're asking for, well, we will attempt to not have to use it and match most of the city's commitment with, with in-kind services and staff time. But it's an excellent thing for, uh, Cherry Street and looking at, and getting all this, um, construction, um, planning, plans put together and moving forward.
Can you go into the impact, uh, the, uh, in-kind services? I forgot to mention that. And that would reduce the amount of the appropriation. Could you, uh, detail for the council what that will, what that might mean?
So what that lets us do is apply a, a dollar amount to every hour of staff DPW or
Okay.
any city staff time that goes towards the project and deduct that from the financial commitment that the city is looking at for the, for the, for the work.
So would that mean the grant is, uh, gets larger because the whole project costs so much money that they'll give us more money?
No, it's just rather than using the, the, the cash to make up the city's commitment, we use staff time.
Oh, I see. Okay.
Dollar amount for every hour of, of whether it be my time or Diane's time or Dan's time, or if, or if anyone from planning is working on it. Those hours are able to take away from what we need to match with cash.
Okay.
Great.
Can I add something real quick?
Me too. We keep wanting to call you Counselor Bag, uh, Planner Bag.
Just to, just to build on it, I mean, I think Greg touched on it. You know, this is a, it's a planning grant. So the way the state is structuring their grants right now is you do, you conduct the planning grants and it makes you more eligible and ready for action grants in this case. So like for the Cherry Street, it's a design for the improvement. And then presumably next year or the next time the grant, the action grant becomes available, you have the design plans ready in hand to apply for the funding to actually make the improvement. And so that's really important for, for the Cherry Street in particular. And then part of the grant is to assess other areas and to start to get sort of, uh, like some other projects in the queue. Um, the understanding right now is that this MVP funding is going to be available for a while. It's really based on climate resiliency. So it's a program that the state's really looking at. So the more that we can plan and, um, line up our next projects, it makes us more eligible for, for the action grants, which are the, the construction projects in the future. So I think it's, it's really worth the investment now because it'll line us up with a series of projects to again, seek the actual funding for the construction too. Just wanted to add that.
Thank you, Jeff. That's a great ad. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Seeing none, Counselor Wrist?
Uh, did you ask the public then?
Well, I thought that was implied. Anyone from the public would like to, uh, make a comment? Okay, go ahead, Counselor.
Sorry. Uh, I would like to make a, a motion that the city council approved a supplemental appropriation. The amount requested is $60,000 to be transferred from Fund 85 Capital Stabilization, $60,000 to be transferred to Sewer Miscellaneous Professional and Technical Services, $60,000 for the following purpose. The city has been awarded, I'm sorry, my phone is ringing and I apologize for that. The city has been awarded a municipal vulnerability to vulnerability preparat- preparedness grant uh, for FY 2021 for the green infrastructure planning and resiliency design for Cherry Street project. This grant requires a 25% match for the city, which can include both in-kind services and cash match. We plan to provide a mix of in-kind and cash match for our portion of the funding. The cash match along with in-kind match grant would, would fund the following: citywide green infrastructure low impact development assessment and identification of nature-based solutions, Cherry Street neighborhood site-specific design, development of green infrastructure master plan, and public outreach and community engagement. I move that this be approved by the city council.
Second.
I will, I will.
Motion and a.
Take a JP's thing and say that I'll second on behalf of Precinct Three.
Fair enough. Motion and a second for supplemental appropriation in the amount of $60,000 for the green infrastructure planning and resiliency design for Cherry Street. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Great job. We are done with the public hearing. I'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, close public hearing. Any conversation? Public, uh, Barbara?
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Wrist?
Aye.
And the public hearing is now closed. Uh, we now move on to communication from elected official boards and committees. I'd heard from a few of you that you wanted to make some comments. So, uh, JP, did you want to start with ballot three question?
Thank you. Uh, yes, I would. Uh, if you haven't noticed already, with those folks who now have mail-in ballots, uh, and for those who are voting in person and will vote on election day, there is in East Hampton a question three. What is question three? I see that, Lindsay. Excellent. What is question three? Uh, and what's the CPA? Well, first of all, I'll, I'll try to be brief in this, but want to be thorough so folks can make a good decision. The Community Preservation Act was enacted a long time ago, accepted in East Hampton. Of that act, there are certain carve-outs, certain exemptions. One of the exemptions is for a, uh, low-income and lower moderate income seniors, uh, to not pay for the surcharge. So property owned and occupied as a residence by a person who would qualify for lower, low-income housing or lower moderate income senior housing in the city, where those residents must apply annually to receive the exemption. So they must meet uh, certain income eligibility requirements. This council in fact discussed the matter over the summer and the spring and voted fully in favor nine to zero to place this on the ballot, supporting the measure. I will also like to report that, uh, the Community Preservation Committee of the Community Preservation Act here in East Hampton also voted unanimously to support this measure uh, back in February of this year. So, uh, what does it do? It enables those individuals who are low-income and would be eligible for lower moderate income senior housing, if you choose to vote yes, to be eligible for the exemption. Now, the person would have to be 60 or over if they are to qualify for the low, for the lower moderate income senior. A no vote leaves the current system in place where all homeowners will continue to pay for the CPA surcharge. Personally, uh, as a citizen, I am very happy to see this Community Preservation Act. So I was concerned what will be the impact on the funds. After all, there are many great activities here in the city, projects that just wouldn't happen if we didn't have the Community Preservation Act. So how will it really affect? Uh, so I, I looked at those communities that have single-family parcels in other, similar to ours. We have, uh, 4,050. I looked at Wilbraham with 4,650 and Agawam with 4,150. And, uh, to reiterate, we found that Wilbraham granted only five exemptions in the last fiscal year. And Agawam actually granted no exemptions. So it really wasn't something that folks clamored to do, but it was available to those who needed it the most, should they choose to apply. Now, we have in here in East Hampton 63 individuals who, uh, take advantage of the 41C exemption, uh, which provides up to a thousand dollars of tax relief for municipal property taxes. So I do expect that at least those 63 will apply. Well, how much money is it? It's not a lot, but every little bit counts if you're a low-income or a lower, lower moderate income senior. If you are a person who, uh, is on a fixed income and expenses are rising while your income does not rise. The average single-family property owner who qualifies would be eligible for about $88.01 per year. And they'd have to apply annually. Over time, that adds up to a bit, but it is well within the amounts uh, along with everybody else who will continue to pay the surcharge to support our CPA and keep the ball rolling. So if you're in favor of this measure, you would vote yes to exempt the, the low income people and lower moderate income seniors. If you are opposed, you would vote no.
Awesome. Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski. That was really helpful. Uh, Counselor Wrist?
This is a follow-up. I want to thank Counselor Kuzinski for proposing this and for all of the great data. Just so everybody knows, as chairman of the CPA and probably the number one champion for the CPA in this city, I would never propose something that I thought would damage the CPA's ability to fund its projects. We received, well, he has a very ballpark figure of $500,000 in a budget year, uh, as revenue. It is estimated that this will impact us at most maybe five or $6,000. That's very minimal, but anything we can do to help the category as of low-income, moderate income and senior housing uh, owners is worth doing. So this is not a great impact on our fund availability and all of our projects will move forward um, as they always have. But this can help at least a little bit and every little bit helps. Thank you, Counselor Kuzinski for proposing this.
Thank you. Do any other counselors have any other comments that they would like to make tonight in communications? Counselor Zaret?
Thank you, uh, Counselor Coniff. Um, I, um, have been in a lot of reflection since our last meeting. Um, I had a few comments I wanted to make. I've probably written these and rewritten them about 50 times. Um, but I thought it was important to speak for myself, um, based on some of the events that transpired at our last meeting. Um, if any of my colleagues find this offensive, that is not my intention. It's just the best statement I can come up with to speak my own truth and certainly no offense is intended. Um, I wanted to start off by noting my sincerest regrets that Bill Lynch has resigned from the council. Bill, first and foremost, is a friend, but I owe our mutual pursuit of public office to our friendship. I cannot say enough about how I appreciate his honesty and courage as a counselor. He spent counsel, countless hours, as, um, Pat Bruff mentioned earlier, dissecting the budget and offering potentially unpopular but fiscally responsible budget recommendations. As chair of appointments, he applied his years of management to elevate the already good work being done in that committee. I will miss him in these chambers, but I am thankful for him in my life. For those who attended and watched the last meeting, it is an understatement to say that our last meeting was a deep and hurtful disappointment to me both professionally and personally. The comment that I do not represent the values of East Hampton, what I felt to be a confirmation by omission of comment has left me in deep reflection of my work and my role in the city council. It was a public comment and so I'll respond publicly. All I could do is share my concept of the values of our city and see if there's any mutual resonance there. There were certainly many relevance in my, in events in my life that led to my desire to run for public office in the city. I think after holding my first Hanukkah on the pond and feeling like I created some more space for the Jewish community in town, it made me realize that there were opportunities to apply myself to reaching our resonance with my other passions and concerns for the city. My core platform from the start has not changed, a desire to reach as many people in the city in order to bring them into the process of city government. This means connecting with all the 16,000 people in East Hampton regardless of race, religion, creed, and especially politics. I believe that everyone gets a voice and yes, there are folks that I vociferously disagree with on politics and policy, but it's my obligation and elected duty to make sure that concerns and voices are included in the discussion. I've built an incredibly successful constituency through my use in social media and as well as my work done in person to make the city more visible, transparent and accessible to each and every one of them. I'm proud of the work I have done, work which is done with very limited time and numerous commitments to work, family, community and friends. And yes, I've been loud and spoken at times, but I think everyone here knows you're always going to know where I stand. I'll never tell you one thing and do another. I vote for what I think on the matter and not what I believe others will think of me, which has gotten me into trouble a lot of times. I've pursued an active and progressive agenda that embraces equity and the progress of our city into a 21st century municipality. I'm driven only by my love for the city and the people in it and nothing more. I don't want to be mayor. I'm not looking for praise. I do not seek a higher office. What you see is what you get. A person with a deep love for East Hampton and all the people in it. I'm not here to sift through my constituents and pick through the ones that suit my cause. They are here to look at my work and choose if they want to pick me. And speaking of love, I believe in kindness and compassion. I do not see a path to solutions without conversations. And yeah, those conversations may be uncomfortable to have. And yes, we may disagree, but they are essential to the democratic process and the building community. What I don't believe in is building community through shame, callouts, cancellation or condescension. These methods only search to widen chasms, burn bridges and sow resentment. As I said, I believe in kindness. I believe in compassion, collaboration, conversation. We cannot come together by pushing each other apart. While both of these methods may spring from the same passions, it is, those passions are fire and we must choose if we're going to use that fire to light the candles of friendship or to burn down the whole forest. Do we choose to point fingers to cut like knives? Or do we open our hands to sow fertile relationships like plowshares? So this is the best way I can explain my values and describe them to all of you. And I hope they're shared by you. And, and let's be honest, you're telling the Jewish guy who fought for our schools, our workers, and asked the mayor to raise the flag over City Hall that I don't represent your values. We have a year left together as colleagues. I appreciate all the work that you have done behalf of the city. And I'll do my best to treat you all with the respect you deserve as our professional relationship dictates. And I'm not perfect. I'm actually a very deeply flawed person. I admit that. And so if I offend you, please call me up. Don't call me out. I'm committed to our success together and to continue to look forward to the success of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselors Zaret. Anyone else have any, uh, counselor communications? Counselor Derby?
I do. And I'll try to make it quick. And if you don't mind, I'm going to share my screen. Um, because what I'd like to do is I'd like to talk about the, um, East Hampton Open Space and Recreation Plan, which I am on the steering committee for. Um, and I want everybody to remember this, this website. It's easthamptonma.gov slash OSRP, which stands for Open Space Recreation Plan. Um, as this is a survey that we are trying to gather information from the community around, um, where people are recreating in East Hampton so we can create an open space. people are recreating in East Hampton so we can create an open space recreation plan that accurately reflects the diverse amazing opportunities we have in East Hampton to get outside and recreate. And we need more people to take this survey. And so this is where you can find it. If you go to easthamptonma.gov/OSRP or you can go directly to it, you can see on the And I know that's a long one, but so just go to easthamptonma.gov/OSRP. And this is really great information that'll help us kind of forge the future of recreation in East Hampton, help us get grant funds, and this is a great opportunity for you to have your voice heard. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you, Councilor Derby. Any other councilors have anything they would like to say? Okay. Moving on to correspondence announcements and president, vice president communications, Councilor Rist, do you have anything that you would like to speak to at all?
I was going to speak to the nominations, but I'll do that at the next meeting, Councilor. Thank you very much, Madam President.
Okay. Jeff, would you mind? I'm going to hold off on again talking about kind of the nomination for replacement of city council until after you're done. So if you're still here, there he is, if you want to talk about the wayfinding project that you have in the hopper.
Sure. Thank you. In the packet, and now I lost my notes, the most recent packet for city council. I wanted to just make sure that the council was aware that we did receive some grant funding. We received $15,000 from the Massachusetts Downtown Initiative. We received it a ways back, but I think due to COVID, it's taken a little while to get the ball rolling. But we have a consultant who we're working with to explore a wayfinding system for East Hampton. And it's important in a lot of different ways that to help people who are visiting East Hampton get to the places that they want to go. And it's actually a very involved kind of conversation that is going to involve a community meeting to gather some ideas and to help gather some imagery and some and compile things that we have done really successfully. This consultant works out of Boston and he talks about East Hampton very highly in terms of, you know, we have bike racks that are made by artists. We have Old Town Hall that has a beaming light at night. We light up the star on Mount Tom. We light up Cottage Street. We and there's many examples going all the way back to things like Bear Fest. And these are all things that are examples of wayfinding that we have done so well. And what we're looking to do is come up with a cohesive plan. And it starts with kind of two really important things, which is to get a system of signs that would orient people driving cars who are arriving here for the first time. And the example that we're using most commonly is the mill district. Many of us know that there's a mill district and the mills are alive, but if you are here for the first time and you're driving down Pleasant Street, you're not really sure that you've arrived in a mill district. And to make the matters worse, to get behind the mills, you really have to know. And people should not have to hunt for these kinds of things. There's a common sign system that orients people. And then the other thing that we're really pushing hard on the consultant to help us with is pedestrian orientation. So if you're on the bike path and if you're riding the bike path for the first time, to understand that at Union Street, when you're crossing Union Street, if you go up, you're going to get to Main Street. If you go down, you can get to Cottage Street. And we need a cohesive system for orienting people. So this is a really exciting project. And my ask real quick before I stop is we are desiring someone from city council to join our working group. Right now, we have the chair of the EDIC. We have Pasqualina Azarella, who's our arts coordinator, and we have the chair of the public art committee. So what we're trying to do is build, you know, some representatives to help us build momentum and then ultimately the plan comes back to city council for sort of an approval, excuse me, for us to move forward. So that's my big request is if there's anyone on council who would be willing to participate in a couple of meetings with us and the consultant to help us. I see. Okay. We have many and we talked about how.
Jeff, did you have?
Yeah. Go ahead. Sorry.
No, apparently I'm, my computer is freezing again. So are you, first of all, did you have more that you wanted to say?
No, that's good. I'm trying to keep it brief.
So to the fellow city councilors, we're not going to have like a Q and A with Jeff tonight. He really is just here to kind of toss it out so we know about it. I would encourage you to please reach out to Jeff if you would like to be one of those councilors that participates on the committee or if you have any other questions, please reach out to Jeff. This item will come back to city council as an agenda item and then we can do the due diligence of debating it at that time. But really, I just wanted Jeff to kind of throw this one over the bow and let us know about it. So appreciate your time, Jeff. Thank you.
Thank you for having me here for that.
Of course, all the time. Okay. So before we go into the rest of the agenda, I want to kind of touch on the city council vacancy and the process by which we are going to fill that vacancy. It's kind of complicated and I will try to move through it as quickly as I can. I know this meeting is going long already and we haven't even gotten to the committee reports, but I think it's important and we're kind of running out of runway a little bit on this. We had meant to talk about this last week, but we didn't. So first and foremost, I want to echo what other people have said about Councilor Lynch. If anyone here loves this city more than that guy, I want to meet them. He really has put his heart and soul into this job in almost two years that he's been here and he has certainly had an impact. And he is, he keeps an eye on the finances to a degree that is almost unprecedented. And I appreciate that. I think he's kept the, all of us really honest around how we're spending the money. We certainly didn't agree with him all the time and that's totally fine. Vigorous debate is what we're all about. So I appreciate all of the hard work that he put in to his two years here on the council. He will be missed tremendously, but as I have noted to him a few times over the last week, he's enjoying his life not being on the council just a little bit too much. So he needs to tone that down and not be so happy all the time. But I'm really happy that he decided to, you know, kind of take care of his family and take care of himself with his decision and I applaud that. I want to read his resignation letter for anybody who has not seen it and get that into the record. So bear with me, please. "President Coniff and Vice President Rist, a year ago, we were all elected to the city council. Over the last year, a lot has changed in all of our lives. For mine, I have been promoted twice at work. My life now has, has to, my wife now has to work from home. Billy started remote school learning last week and there is still a global pandemic. The demand for my new position is a lot more than that of my last role and even more than the role I had a year ago. So far, I have missed two meetings, had to reschedule a third and not returned emails to residents in a timely manner or at all. Between everything going on and the time and dedication needed for the council, I feel I am neglecting my family and not giving them enough of my time with the remote learning. More time at home is needed. When I became a counselor, life was a lot different and it was manageable, but I also take a lot of pride in what I commit to. If I say I will do something, I will give it 100%. By missing meetings and not responding back to the constituents, I am not giving the 100% I said I would. Because of the concerns listed above, I do not feel that I am giving my family or the council 100% of the time needed. My family is my top priority and a change is needed. I feel that in order for me to be there for my family, I will need to resign as city counselor at large effective immediately. This decision was hard for me, but I feel it is the right one. I want to thank everyone for the support over the last few years and I appreciate everyone's friendship that has come from it. I will continue to pay attention to the progress in our wonderful city. All the best, Bill Lynch, and it's dated September 25." So, so yeah, we're going to miss Bill, but now we have to move on to the process of filling the vacancy from Bill's departure. And I will try to roll through this fairly quickly. I am going to, and I have and I will continue to send additional updates to all of the city councilors in terms of timeframes, information we need and kind of nuances to the process as we get smarter. This is the first time we've had to do this, so the roadmap has not been created yet. So we're kind of creating it now. So for the public, when there is a vacancy in the city council, the first step is to look at whoever may not have been, who had not received enough votes either in an at-large capacity, if that's who has resigned, or in a district capacity, if that is where the vacancy is. When that happens, we go to the next person who got the most votes without getting elected. And in this case, there was a person. Laura May Douglas was the person who would be eligible to replace Bill as the city counselor. However, as you all know, she is a nurse. She is an essential employee during the pandemic. She's working a crazy amount of hours and as Bill mentioned, life has changed from a year ago to today. She is unable to commit to the obligation of a city counselor at this time, so she has declined, which then moves us into the next phase of what our charter defines for us to fill a vacancy. So when we have no individuals available, it then falls to the city council to elect an individual to replace that vacancy. There is not a lot of definition around the process to elect a replacement. We did however, so that was section 2-11C of the city charter, if anyone would like to go read that. That's kind of the section that we are adhering to for this. We are also marrying that up to the city council rules, which is rule 8B, which basically says if we have to replace a city counselor and we have more than three candidates, two candidates for that position, we will elect them using ranked choice voting processes. So there's a number of layers to this that we as a council are going to have to kind of work through. One of those, again, is ranked choice voting. So the first step in all of this is for us to get nominations to, of individuals within the community who are both members of residents of East Hampton and voters, registered voters, get nominations so that we can in fact vote. And the way we are doing that is we're allowing one nomination per city counselor. That is, because we have no bylaws pertaining to that, we default back to Roberts rules. And in Roberts rules, chapter 14, section 46, if anyone's really interested, no, in no event may a member nominate more persons than there are places to fill. So because we have one vacancy, we can all only nominate one person. So that will mean a maximum of seven nominations. Do the math, that leaves one. I will not be nominating anyone because I am basically overseeing the process and that just didn't seem right. So I'm going to abstain from nominating. So maximum of seven people can be nominated. I have publicly put this out on all of the Facebook pages for individuals who are interested to reach out to the city council, provide resumes, provide cover letters and so forth. Some people have done that and we, and essentially the process is you need to have a city counselor commit to nominating you who is not already nominating somebody else. I know that right now we have more than two, so we will likely, pending how many actual nominations go through next week, we're going to hold the official nominating process next week, pending how many come out of that. If there are more than two, we are going to hold a special city council meeting on October 28th for the sole purpose of running a ranked choice voting election for the replacement city council. So next week, we will have the official nominations, the 28th. I think publicly I had put out and I may have emailed people, so I'm going to change the timetable a little bit. We had talked about next week, all the people that would be nominated would be allowed to speak and questions would be placed of them. Because of the length of these meetings, the regular city council meetings that we're having, we've decided that since we have a city, a special meeting, we will defer all of the commentary by whoever is nominated to be held on the 28th. They will be given five minutes to basically explain to us their interest in being a city counselor. Each of us then will be allowed to ask one question of that individual to get more information and we will go through as many, up to seven nominees as we have. So that will even make that a little lengthy, but it feels fair to me, given that we've not done this before. And if we have to do it again, maybe we do it a different way, but that feels a little fair right now. So when we vote ranked choice voting, and I will make this really brief, we're going to use an application that I found online actually, that will allow us to do the voting online and the results will be tabulated immediately by this tool that's online. I have sent all of you a link to a sample test ballot to show you how it's going to work. All of this, when we do the voting, will be very public and I will share my screen when we provide the results. We will validate with the city clerk everyone's vote and ranking verbally so that we are ensured that you voted the way you meant to vote and there's no technical issues. So we're going to do a lot of checks and balances, but because of the way ranked choice voting works, we need to have a tool that will help us work through this. And I think this tool will work really well. Tom Peake seems to think it's going to be okay and he's been kind of knee deep in the ranked choice voting process. So between now and October 28th, my city councilors, I will provide as much time as you need from me to walk you through physically doing that. I will create a link to our final ballot and I will email that to you during the October 28th meeting, right before we vote. And we will vote at that time using the link I provide and then I will display the results and that person will then be duly elected to the city council and will be sworn in on November 4th. Whoever is elected must attain five yes votes to be elected. If we, if we don't, all of the, though obviously the way ranked choice voting works, we're going to get there depending upon how many rounds it takes to get there. But that is the, that is the line that has to be crossed, which is five yes votes out of eight. I don't want to belabor this because we can go into this a little bit more. Anyone out there in the public domain who would like to throw their hat in the ring metaphorically and physically, please reach out to any of the city councilors. You can send your resume, cover letter to me and I'll make sure that the rest of the council gets it. You may want to have conversations with councilors so that you can rest assured that they will be nominating you. So it's not enough just to send in your resume. We need to kind of, you know, make sure that you have someone who will be in fact nominating you during the process. It could be that we get more than seven and so it's not a guarantee that just sending in your resume will get you nominated. So that is something I'd like the public to consider, but certainly if you are interested, please go ahead and send us your information. We are, I would like to get all of the folks who are interested into the packet for next week. We may not make that deadline just because of the missing out from last week. We'll do what we can. If your name does not make it into the packet, that's fine because nominations can be made without, they can be made from the floor regardless. So I don't want it to look like if you don't hit this deadline, you're not going to be nominated. You can be nominated regardless, but as many as we can so that the public is aware of who's running. I would like to get it into that packet. And like I said, if we don't, then it will certainly, all the names will be available for the October 28th meeting. Any questions on that really quick? Councilor Kuzinski.
That was very thorough and quite deliberative. We appreciate all the effort to keep that. That was very thorough and quite deliberative. We appreciate all the effort to keep that on track. That being said, I wanted to express my really strong disappointment in having this process. We have voting on a regular basis. I am, it's a shame that there wasn't some way to, upon the resignation, to be able to get somebody, get the applicants who would like to run for the position, to go to the public and be before the entire public and be voted on, especially when we had an upcoming election. I think that's something that we ought to look at as perhaps a charter revision, should this ever happen to occur again.
Thank you, Councillor Krasinski. Any other comments or questions really quick? Councillor Riss?
Two things. I respectfully disagree, Councillor Krasinski. When we did this previously, we've never had this issue, because we had a lot of candidates available from at-large, say, elections. And I believe the founders realized that a special election would cost the city greatly. And we're representatives of the city, and this person who gets nominated and gets elected will only be on the city council for now one year, and they would have to run for election, and they are not allowed to put down on their, or Barbara is not allowed to put down on the election ballot, that they're an incumbent, that they are running for reelection, because they weren't elected. So I believe, I'm sorry to disagree with you, but I believe this system is the best that we can do. And I don't feel a special election would work. It'd be nice, you know, we don't know when, if we could have fit it into this election, yes, but that's almost impossible to predict. Secondly, a question for Councillor Coniff. When would you like the public to speak to the nominees? I assume next week, but I'd like you to speak to that, because you didn't touch on it.
Yeah, sorry. So are you saying, not the candidates themselves, but people just commenting about the nominees? Well, you know, that's tricky, and I think I now understand what you were saying this morning. That's tricky, because we may not know in totality the nominees next week. We may have a good idea, but we may not know them. So, we could add public speak for the purpose of only speaking to the candidates on the special meeting on October 28th, if that works for all of the councillors. I think next week, to your point, Dan, we wouldn't know all the nominees necessarily, because you can certainly make a nomination from the floor at the time we're doing nominations, and we wouldn't know that in advance. So, I'll open that to the council. Would you be open to public speak on the 28th for people to speak to the candidates who have, who will by then be officially eligible?
Absolutely. And it goes to Councillor Krasinski's comment. We can't have an election, but we have to allow the public to speak to the candidate they would like us to choose. So, it may increase the length of the meeting, but this is pretty important. And all we're talking about that night, nothing else is on the agenda, so we should allow the public to speak on the 28th to the candidate of their choice. Three minutes, no lengthy, and I hope positive, not negative about a comment. I just want to make that perfectly clear from my own personal perspective. Be positive about the candidate you'd like to see the council elect, and not be negative towards somebody else. So that doesn't do our city any good. It's divisive. But I think we must allow it, because we can't have an election. So, I'm going to ask you to have public speak that evening, President Coniff.
Does anyone disagree with that sentiment? Councillor Zarek?
Just to clarify, you're saying in two meetings, when we actually will take the vote, correct?
Two meetings.
The 28th or the 21st?
The 21st, we will take all the nominations.
But the question regarding, sorry.
No, go ahead.
The question regarding public speak, you're saying on the 28th?
Yes, because typically, public speak in a special city council meeting is not required. And so it's optional. It is required for our regular city council meetings, but not for this. So, it's kind of up to us, and it sounds like everybody wants it. So I think that's what we'll do. We'll put it on the agenda for the 28th. Councillor Riss?
Just to clarify, Councillor Zarek, what Peg is referring to is we normally have public speak at the beginning of a meeting. We don't know how many nominees will be there available next week. We may have some drop out, we may have new ones. So it'd be hard for the public to know who to speak to. So I would encourage the public not to speak on the 21st to a candidate. They can, but I would rather they speak that night, on the 28th. That way, we'll know all the nominees. And if I'm clear, Councillor Coniff, you want us to actually nominate the person that we want to nominate that evening, the 21st?
Correct.
Placed in the nomination. So, for a week, people can read their resumes, their cover letters, and learn about the candidates. And I like that. That gives the people a week to see who's wanting to do the job. Thank you.
Absolutely. Councillor Krasinski?
Just to respond to Councillor Riss, just briefly, I wanted to say I wasn't suggesting necessarily a special election. My point was that from day one, when we take our oath of office, until the state election, which occurs in the interim between the municipal elections, it'd be great, since there already is the expense of an election, if there was some way to figure out if the poll workers are there, there could be a ballot, and we could do something at that time, just to explore that possibility on behalf of the citizens.
And I, you know, my only comment on all of this will be that we are bound by our city charter. And I believe, and admittedly, there are some gaps in it related to this particular process. So I have defaulted in a number of ways to Roberts Rules and/or our city council rules. But while I wholeheartedly endorse, if you think there's a different process we should use, we would need to change the city charter, and I think you have already alluded to that. So at this point, we are pretty much bound by our city charter, which is the city council will elect the vacant position. And as duly elected members from the public, we represent them as a representative government. And so, I think it's completely within the norm for us to do that. And if we want to go a step further and create a different process, then we can change the city charter.
That's what I was suggesting, that we consider the possibility of a different process. I have every confidence that we are doing what the charter requires us to do within the law and within our charter. So, kudos to that for the first time facing this issue.
Well, you know, it's 2020. Everything is just, let's try something. Councillor Zarek?
President Coniff, thanks for all your work on this. And on top of all the work you've already done in the midst of the pandemic, this is, well, it's 2020. Just to clarify, while motions and nominations can be made from the floor, if I'm understanding some of the communications correctly, you would prefer that councillors put forward nominations, if they can, by tomorrow, just so it makes into the packet. Is that a fair statement?
Yeah. I mean, if you have resumes and cover letters already, please, let's get those into the packet. You know, in theory, we can amend the packet a few days before the meeting, but I don't necessarily feel that that's critically important, because we'll have that extra week between the 21st and the 28th to kind of catch up with all of the information. But I would like it as soon as we can get it, because, like I said, we're running out of runway, and I would like the public to be able to know who is potentially the next city councillor. Anything else? And thank you for those kind words, Councillor Zarek. This involves spreadsheets, and I think we know how much I enjoy spreadsheets. Okay, that is that. We will move on in the agenda, which I have lost to mayor communications. Mayor LaChappelle, did you have anything that you would like to speak to?
No.
Okay. Well, that was very concise. Then we'll move on to reports of standing committees. Finance, Councillor Riss?
Thank you, Madam President. We met, and we've come to a conclusion on the stipends, and I'll be placing that into the packet in the near future. I do want to make a motion to move the amendments to the FY 2021 budget, cultural recreation, debt and interest to the finance committee for review.
Second?
Motion is second to move the amended budget, cultural recreation, and debt and interest to the finance committee. Any discussion? Barbara? Owen Zarek?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And although we don't have to advertise or hold a public hearing, it would appear, I do want to set a public hearing for those two items, so we have a specific time for the public to react to these budget changes. So I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for next week, the 21st. Again, we don't have to advertise it, so we can do it within a week. And I believe there's an issue with regard to the tax recap. I'd like to get this done next week. If we hadn't canceled last week's meeting, there would be plenty of time. So I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for those two items for next week at 6:15.
Second?
Motion is second to set a public hearing, and just for my clarification, for salaries and stipends and amended budget?
No, no, just the budgets. I'm not ready on the stipends.
So just for the amended budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it. Okay. Any further discussion?
Councillor Zarek?
Councillor Zarek?
Just for my clarification, can you clarify, these do not need to be posted, you said?
According to Barbara, she feels that they do not have to be posted, because they're amendments. And I have to tell you, I don't recall when we've ever done this. These are clarifications and not necessarily adjustments. They're not really changing the bottom, I don't know. I just feel that I have to trust Barbara on this. I also feel that we can get it done before the tax recap, which is important. So I feel like we can do this. I don't know if that helps your answer to my question, your question.
Okay. Any, nobody else? Okay, Barbara? Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Lindsey?
Lindsey?
Aye.
Owen Zarek?
Yes.
Finally, we're going to, sorry. Finally, we're going to meet this Monday, October 19th, at 5 o'clock, to discuss this and the stipends. We had to do Monday to get it done before next Wednesday, because we were going to meet tonight, but we had to postpone it. So I'm going to ask that the treasurer and the auditor please attend that meeting to discuss these two items, and the mayor, if she would like to. Thank you. That concludes.
Thank you, Councillor Riss. Public safety, Councillor Gomez?
Thank you, Madam President. I want to start saying that usually we met the first Tuesday of each month, because next month, November 3rd, is going to be an election, and it's going to be crazy. We decide to have our next meeting November 10th at 6:00 PM. For that reason, I want to make a motion to request a 60-day extension to the review on street parking restrictions and traffic and orders.
Do you need, do you need?
Yes, because I think expire before November 3rd.
December 26th.
Oh, really?
I think it expires December 26th.
So that's fine. I don't need it.
Yeah.
I withdraw my second.
I withdraw the motion. So, thank you. I thought I needed it. I don't know. For a reason, I had the package eight, so, anyway, thank you. So the committee vote 3 to 0 in favor of the fuel storage license application for 35 and 40 O'Neill Street. We have a public hearing next week at 6:15. We already set up that. But I just want for the record that we vote at the committee 3 to 0. And the other thing that we have is the committee vote 3 to 0 in favor of the fuel storage license application for the new school, 200 Park Street. And we have to schedule a public hearing, and I want to make a motion to schedule a public hearing for November 4th at 6:15.
Motion is second to set a public hearing on the fuel storage license for 200 Park Street for November 4th at 6:15. Any further discussion? Barbara? Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarek?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And that concludes.
Thank you, Councillor Gomez. We have no appointments, so ordinance councillor Derby?
Buckle up. Here we go. So let's do a little housekeeping first to cleanse the palate. I would love to ask in the form of a motion for the continued review of adult-use cannabis establishment topics to be removed without prejudice.
Motion is second to remove adult-use cannabis establishment topics from the agenda without prejudice. Any further conversation? Barbara? Let's see. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Abstain.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarek?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you. I would like to request in the form of a motion, a 30-day extension on the cannabis establishments and highway business zones. We are going to have the continued public hearing November 4th, but just to be clean about it.
Do you want to, are you going to add 30 days to the, oh no, we already voted on that, never mind. Motion and a second to add 30 days to the zoning amendment cannabis in Highway Business District. Any further discussion? Barbara? Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Krasinski?
Abstain.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarek?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Great. And if tonight had a theme besides being long, it would also be the environment. And this next thing is something that Councillor Zarek and myself are putting forward, and it is basically opting into a state program that allows large commercial buildings to install solar and use the Betterment Assessment. Basically, they don't have to pay the increased taxes. They can use that difference to pay off the solar project. And the really cool thing about this is it's transferable. So if the building sells, the project kind of goes with it. And so this is something that we discussed in ordinance. It passed 3 to 0. And I can turn it over to Councillor Zarek. Councillor Zarek, before I continue, though, would you like to read the resolution? Or would you like me to read the resolution? It's up to you.
Oh, you can read it. I spoke a lot tonight.
Okay. I do have it pulled up, but why don't you, you know, give your two cents, and then I'll pull it up.
I have a question. I'm sorry. I have a question. Are you, are you voting on this tonight, or are you moving it to your committee?
We already have it. We've already discussed it. This does not need a public hearing. This is a-
I don't think this is, this isn't in your, this isn't in your subcommittee.
I'm reading it on the-
It has been. We've already discussed it. We got this a few weeks ago.
This is a request to opt-in to state's PACE program.
Oh, okay.
This is the new solar stuff.
This is not the new solar.
Oh, my bad. Okay.
The PACE program is a solar program, a renewable energy program, not just solar.
That's what you're talking about?
Yes.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And it does not require a public hearing, and it is time-sensitive.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, Councillor Zarek, would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, just briefly, again, to avoid this becoming the movie Maximum Fervocity, the PACE program, or property-assisted clean energy financing, is a program. It's actually, it's actually MGL. All we'd be doing tonight is basically voting to accept MGL. There's other similar laws on the books that municipalities can opt into. This, Councillor Derby already explained it, so I don't really have to explain it much more. What it will allow is especially our city that is, really has its foundations currently- Many of these are, are old and have aging energy infrastructure as well as HVAC systems, et cetera. This program will allow them to up, opt into potentially updating them through a betterment assessment that goes to pay typically a 20-year bond. As, as Counselor Derby stated, it is transferable. Also, there's an assessment process so that none of the building owners will be allowed to enter into this process unless it's, it's financially reasonable and the betterment is, actually will benefit them. This also does cover multi-unit houses, I believe, over five units, I could just double check that. But I don't, I, I hope that we have a lot of people who opt into it, I don't think this will be a huge burden on the city. The, I spoke with the treasurer about this, the, the city basically acts as a pass-through. I don't know if, actually, Jen Galant is on the call, President, would, would it be appropriate to ask her to weigh in on this at all?
Absolutely. Jen, do you have, if you're there, Jen?
Yep, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, we, we spoke about this, and Owen, I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the, the woman that-
Julie Cowell, Julie-
Yes, and mainly my concern was that, you know, we don't wanna take on any liability, obviously. And it was my understanding that we were kind of just a pass-through, and she did verify that, yes, there is no liability to the city in this. And, you know, I don't have her email up in front of me, but obviously, we can, you know, we can get more information from her if necessary, but it was, she was, you know, she, she knew the, the program inside and out, and had said it up many times. She said that that wasn't an issue for the city at all. So I was glad to hear that. And that said, you know, I mean, as long as that's the case, then I'm on board.
Counselor Zarrett, Counselor Kuzinski?
Counselor Kuzinski? Do you mind if I finish and then you take questions, President Coniff?
Sure, go for it.
Really quickly, also, the individual that our treasurer was referring to represents Mass Development, who basically helps implement this program. And we've been, I've been speaking about this for probably the better part of a year, so it's been a long decision-making process. The only reason I did not ask her to attend the meeting is because this went through ordinance without really any significant questions, and a lot of the groundwork was already done. All the information you saw was provided in the pack, and I think that was pretty robust. So that's, that, oh, and Mike Nishon and also the manager of Eastworks have expressed interest in this, they say it will significantly help improve the mill industrial district. Now I'm done, thank you.
Okay. Mayor, your hand was up earlier, did you have a comment on this?
No, I'm set, I put my hand down, sorry.
All right. Okay, any questions from the counselors? Counselor Kuzinski?
Planner Bag still on the call?
I believe he is.
Jeff?
Jeff, can you join us?
We're very thorough in your previous analysis and wanting to be complete about our understanding. Is there some way you could maybe in a minute or two walk us through from beginning to end of project, how this works, what would an owner have to do, how would it work, what would the city do, and what would be, for example, a conclusion of a specific project? So the public and everyone can understand.
In a unique situation, I do not know. This is not a project that I am deeply familiar with, so I'm, I am gonna have to punt that. I, I understand the value added for the mill owners as explained, but I don't, I don't, I do not know the ins and outs of this one. I apologize. Maybe Jen, or Salem, or even Owen could, could give an overview of that, I just haven't been that familiar with this one, I'm sorry.
Kuzinski, did you have a question, or you wanted just more of a, a little deeper dive into this a little bit?
Just a bit of deeper dive, for example, what's a betterment? How, how does it, how does it operate? What kinds of things can be done with that, those funds? What can't be done? What would be the city's role? I understand the treasurer has said we have no liability. What's our role and what's our obligations?
Counselor Derby or Counselor Zarrett, can you speak to those things?
Owen, you wanna take that, or do you want me to take it?
I'll give a, I'll give a brief synopsis, and then you can fill in any gaps. So just to start, Counselor Kuzinski, that's a great question, a lot of that information is available in the packet materials I submitted. In fact, I'd say all of the information is available in the packet materials I submitted. I'll give you a really quick rundown, basically, a, a building, an industrial or commercial building owner, it becomes interested in making clean energy improvements on their building, they approach, typically, this can be done through Mass Development, where they will approach someone to basically come out and, for instance, solar's the easiest discussion here, so someone wants to put solar on their building, there is a assessment process where first of all, it's determined if the improvement can be made, if the improvement is made, will it actually really benefit the building, i.e., will putting solar on the roof of a mill building actually provide energy and be helpful to the owner? Then the cost of the building with the solar, the improvement on it, is basically taken into consideration, and the tax on that new value is calculated. That is the betterment assessment. And so then, the, the difference between the actual current tax value of that building and the better, the betterment assessed value is used to then pay a bond towards financing these clean energy improvements. The bonds are financed through a variety of financing institutions. The betterment assessment, the fact that the, and this is kind of the, the Cliff Notes, but it is, the property is marked as participating in this program, at least this is my understanding, and when the property tax is paid, that difference that would go to paying the bond is kind of separated out from the, the tax bill and sent through, this is the pass-through we were talking about, to the finance, whoever's financing the bond. That's essentially it. Like I said, I, I just don't have them in front of me because there's been so many packets, but this information is covered in, in the, the materials I submit with the packet, I think there's a PowerPoint as well as some other information, as well as the MGL that's relevant. I don't know if, actually, Counselor Peak might have some information?
Are you recognizing him, Counselor?
Well, that's not my job, President Coniff, but I, I see that he's there, but I will pass it back to you.
Counselor Peak, good.
I can say confidently that this information-
Good, Counselor.
September 2nd, I believe, packet, because it was the city council meeting that I missed, was when it was introduced. So I remember, yeah, so I checked that out, it's there and helpful.
Okay.
And I would just say, I would just say that what Counselor Zarrett said is-
Counselor Zarrett, your, your explanation, and so if I could just summarize, for those who haven't read the packet, there are lots in the pub, lots of folks in the public that haven't had the opportunity to read the packet, or have had the opportunity and not availed themselves, but really can hear about it and understand what, what we're voting on. So if a property owner wants to improve the property within certain guidelines, they would do so, making an application to the city, and then any increase in the assessment resulting in additional taxes would then be funneled back to the payment of that improvement. That's what it sounds like. Is that correct?
And just to clarify, that this is for commercial properties, not residential?
Absolutely, for commercial properties. Thank you so much.
Yes, I don't even think that they have to actually apply to the city, this is all done outside of, if someone, this is all done outside of, there's no approval process, there's no, I mean, other than, you know, what would be necessary for appropriate, either planning or through the building inspector, but I do not believe that the city otherwise has to approve the, the PACE loan. I'd have to double-check on that, but I think that, that was done, the, the city's real function here is, is just to kind of make sure that the funds go to the appropriate place for the, for the financing.
Can I, can I make a suggestion? I sense that there's a little bit of confusion around this topic, and I'm wondering if it makes sense for us to vote tonight on it. And can we, can we bring it up? Doesn't, I, I don't feel like any of us have a full grasp of it, perhaps I'm wrong on that, but if everyone's comfortable, we can proceed, but it, it feels like there's a lot of lack of clarity and confusion, but, you know, we can vote however. Counselor Zarrett?
That's fine, I, I agree with that. I mean, I, I think that, I just didn't have the documents in front of me, and, and I'm, I could go either way, this, we, we did kind of, we did review them in the meeting, and I'm sorry that I don't have them prepared off the top of my head. I can, if, actually, I have the, I have a few quick pages of the packet material pulled up, if you'd like me to go over that quickly, maybe, if that would help, or, or, I, I, I serve at your pleasure, and if you wanna move this, I would, I would leave this to the rest of the council. But we did vote 3 to 0 after reviewing this information.
Okay. I'm wondering, I'll leave it to the council. So if you want to bring this forward to a vote tonight, we can certainly do that. There does seem to be a little bit of confusion, not just Owen, or Tom, or Salem, with you understanding it, I'm wondering if all of the counselors were prepared to vote on this tonight, and if we were aware that we were gonna vote on this tonight. That may be the point of confusion, but if everyone is very comfortable, then we will go forward. Hang on, Counselor Zarrett, I saw Counselor Rist's hand up.
I'm prepared to vote on it. I did read the-
Dan?
Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Okay.
I'm prepared to vote on it, I did read the, the information, and I, I do trust our committees, if there were questions, as Counselor Kuzinski asked them, unless other counselors feel they need more questions answered, I'm prepared to vote on this.
Okay. And are we are, we are all feeling comfortable then, that we can go forward? I'm not seeing anyone shake their head, so all right, let's go.
And, and, and I think that maybe as I, as I read this resolution, it kind of, it brings it into focus a little bit, and sorry if I wasn't clear with the introduction, but I mean, it is, it's a relatively simple process, and, and, and a lot of it is outside of the municipality, it's more of us opting into the state MGL, and then that allows them to apply to financing through this program, which then, you know, so, and that difference there goes to pay off that financing.
Got it.
So, and, and I'm, I'm happy to read this, this resolution, and, because it does spell it out a little bit more, and if you'd like me to share it so you can see it at the same time, I can do that as well. I don't, I don't know if that is, is something that's beneficial or not, just, yeah, that's, I got some, I got some heads up. So I don't know if you, I'm hoping you guys can see this now?
Yeah.
Yes? Okay. All right, so, and, and at your pleasure, I will read this.
Please.
Okay. So, "Resolution authorizing the City of East Hampton to participate in the Massachusetts Commercial Property Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE Massachusetts. Whereas pursuant to MGL C-23M, as amended the PACE Act, the Commonwealth has established a commercial sustainable energy program known as the Massachusetts Property-Assessed Clean Energy Program, PACE Massachusetts, to provide a financing mechanism, PACE Financing, to private owners of commercial industrial properties for certain qualifying commercial energy improvements. And whereas pursuant to the PACE Act, PACE Massachusetts is administered by the Massachusetts Development Finance Agency, Mass Development, in consultation with the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. And whereas under PACE Massachusetts, the owners of the commercial or industrial property benefiting from the improvements, the benefited property is required to repay the PACE financing through the payment of a betterment assessment, a PACE betterment assessment, placed on such benefited property by the municipality in which the benefit property is located. And whereas, in order for an owner of a commercial or industrial property to participate in PACE Massachusetts, Section 2 of the PACE Act requires that the municipality in which such property is located must elect to participate in PACE Massachusetts. And whereas the City of East Hampton municipality has determined that it is in the best interest of the municipality to participate in PACE program as a participating municipality, as provided in the PACE Act, to permit the owners of commercial industrial properties located in the municipality to access PACE financing for qualifying commercial energy improvements through PACE Massachusetts. Whereas now, therefore, it be it resolved as follows, the City Council of the City of East Hampton hereby approves the municipality participating in PACE Massachusetts pursuant to the PACE Act, and authorizes the mayor to enter into a PACE Massachusetts municipal assessment and assignment agreement, the agreement, with Mass Development pursuant to which the municipality will agree to levy PACE betterment assessments and impose PACE betterment assessment liens on benefit, benefited properties located in the municipality, and the amounts determined by Mass Development to be sufficient to repay the PACE financing. Two, to assign the PACE betterment assessment liens to Mass Development, which Mass Development may in turn assign to the providers of the PACE financing, each a capital provider as collateral for such PACE financing. And three, include on the property tax bills for the benefited properties the installment payments necessary to repay the PACE betterment assessments in the amounts and at the times as determined by Mass Development. Four, to collect and pay over to Mass Development or its designee the PACE betterment assessment installed payments as and when collected. And five, enforce the, to the extent required by the agreement, the PACE betterment assessments and liens. The agreement to be substantially in the form presented to this meeting with such changes, modifications, or insertations by the mayor may approve as being in the best interest of the municipality. The treasurer of the City of East Hampton or their designee is authorized to levy such PACE betterment assessments and impose the PACE betterment assessment liens on behalf of the city town without further authorization by this legislative body. Notwithstanding any other provision of law to the contrary, officers and officials of the municipality, including without limitation municipal tax assessors and tax collectors, are not personally liable to Mass Development or any other person for claims of whatever kind or nature under the related to PACE Massachusetts, including without limitation claims related to uncollected PACE betterment assessments other than fulfillment of the obligations specified in the agreement. The municipality has no liability to the owner of the benefited property or to any capital provider related to the municipality's participation in PACE Massachusetts." So I'm, I'm hoping that that, if, if you heard, listen, that, that hopefully cleared up some, 'cause I feel like it was pretty clear.
Moving to approve.
And, yeah, and I would, I would love to have a motion to approve, so, and I guess I'll make, in the form of a motion, that we accept the PACE Massachusetts commercial property assessed clean energy program pursuant to MGL C-23M.
Motion and second for the aforementioned resolution on PACE. Any further discussion? Barbara?
Oh, let's see, Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsey Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zarrett?
On behalf of the city at large, aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you for bearing with us on that one.
You've kind of annihilated your existing agenda, but you're gonna backfill it right now with some more stuff.
That was the plan. And would you like me to do new business now?
Please.
Okay. So we have some new business, and I, I, one of the things that's listed under ordinance, which I'm going to, I think that I might try to pawn off on finance, would be the revolving account around EV chargers and bike share program, and I would love to ask Dan if he, if, if he thinks that's the right place for it to go, just 'cause we are gonna have a lot.
I would be happy to take it. I won't be prepared to put that on the next agenda. I'll have to wait for the next finance meeting, but you could move yours, and then I'll come back in and move that to finance.
Sounds good. So we have a, a proposal for solar installation requirement on certain new construction, and I would like to make a motion to move that to ordinance committee.
Second.
Motion second on solar installation to service on certain new construction, move that to ordinance committee. Any further discussion? Okay.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild? Lindsay? Okay. Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
Hi, my mouse wasn't working. I mean, my mouse wasn't working. Sorry.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next one we have is a proposal to change the name of Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I would like to, in the form of a motion, move that to ordinance committee.
Second.
Motion is second to move the resolution on Indigenous Peoples' Day to the ordinance subcommittee. Any further conversation? Counselor Zaret?
Yes, Counselor Coniff, or, and, and by, or Counsel Derby, by way of Counselor Coniff. Did you, did you had, you had said you might want to speak to this on introduction? Is that something you still want to do?
I, I think that it probably, just for time's sake and people's attention's sake, I, I can hold off until we, we bring this forward. But this, you know, just for the record, if anybody read the letter, that it was included in the packet, this is a pretty personal and meaningful thing for me. So, and, and I'll share that when, when we bring it forward.
And I very much appreciated your letter and partnering with you on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Kozinski? Comments on the motion?
Comments on the motion. I will be voting in favor and would encourage all fellow citizens who haven't had the opportunity to read the diaries of Christopher Columbus to take advantage of that. They can email me, or text me, or call 575-6009. I'd be happy to make the correct, the connections to the diaries. I think it's important to understand, particularly for those who may have been taught otherwise, going to school in the 40s, 50s, 60s, or even the 70s.
Thank you, Counselor Kozinski. Any other comments? Barbara?
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
My batteries.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Hi. My mouse battery's must be getting low.
Okay, motion passes. Counselor Derby?
Okay, so we also have a request to consider amending the zoning ordinance of cannabis establishments, the hours of operation. And I would like to, in the form of a motion, send that to, back to the ordinance subcommittee and to the planning board.
Second.
Motion second to send the new adult cannabis dispensary hour change request to the ordinance and planning board committees. Any comments? Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, abstain. I abstain.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes. Anything, hang on, Dan. Anything else, Counsel Derby?
I, I, I'm not sure if the anti-bias training is supposed to be under ordinance, but it sounds like something that would be in rules, so.
I figured that was going to rule.
I think that's going to rules, yes.
I'll just say, that concludes. Thank you very much.
Madam President. Oh, she's frozen.
Counsel Derby. Counsel Rist?
I'd just like to make a motion to move the department revolving account EV chargers and bike share program to finance for review.
Second.
Motion second to move the EV chargers and bike share program to finance committee. Any further comments? Barbara?
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Just a comment, Madam President. I'll put that on the agenda and revise the agenda and send it out again.
Sounds good. Property, Counselor Zaret.
Thank you, President Coniff. Our agenda continues to be in the doghouse, with our single item being in, somewhat in limbo. However, I will reach out to the members of the committee, Counselor Kozinski and Rothschild, just to find a time to convene, just to vote on minutes, just so we don't allow that time to lapse. And so I will reach out to both of you in the near future. And thus concludes.
Thank you, Counselor Zaret. Rules and government relations, Counsel Peak.
Thank you, Madam President. Okay, where do I even want to start? Okay, I'll start with this one. Little bit of housekeeping. We have an item, the request for easthamptonma.gov emails for committee chairs that I had meant to extend last time, and so technically it expired yesterday. Could I get a 90-day extension on that? My understanding is that there's still some research that is being done about some of the finer points, so I just want to give it a long runway, in case it needs it. So I'll move to, yeah, okay. Yeah, I'll make a request for a 90-day extension.
Second.
Motion second to add 90 days' extension to the email for city councilors, committee chairs, sorry. Any discussion? Barbara?
Owen Zaret?
Aye.
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Okay, the city, the, the rules committee met, yeah, it was almost two weeks ago now. We discussed two items, or sort of three, but really mostly two. One was the discussion about changing the polling places for precincts 1, 2, and 5. We spoke with Barb, and we looked over some plans that Counselor Rist had helped draw up. Given the situation and the status of the school as a bit of an active construction site, and some problems that had occurred during the primary, we all felt that this was the most appropriate option, and the plans pretty clearly laid out how it could be done in a way that was, that we, that we hope will, will not create a whole lot of additional traffic. The one question that, that we spoke about a little bit was about parking, but we did note that since the students and teachers won't be there that day, there will actually be a lot more parking at the high school than there normally is during an election, and given that many people will be either early voting or voting by mail, it would, Barb felt that we could handle the capacity. So this was approved by the council 3 to 0. If, if anyone feels the need for us to go over the plans, or have Barb sort of do the presentation again, I'm fine with that. Or if everyone, you know, is comfortable, then I'd be happy to just make a motion to do this.
Counsel Rist?
I have the ability to share the report and the plans, if anybody wants to see them.
Anyone? Doesn't look like anyone is specifically requesting to see the plans. So, do we want to just go ahead and, and take the vote?
Sure. I'm not, is there like a specific thing I'm supposed to be reading for this? Or do I just make a motion to move precincts 1, 2, and 5 to the high school?
One thing I do want to mention is that the council has to realize that this moves them until a, a future vote of the council to change them. So I, I would predict that this will also be for next November, because I don't know what the status of the school opening is. But until the council changes, this is, this is how it's going to be. So it just needs to be clear about that.
Yeah, so I would recommend personally that sometime, maybe the summer of next year, we sort of evaluate the status of the school construction project and how this went, you know, how, how this ends up going this time around, and decide whether there's any additional changes we need to make. But I, I think for now, this is, in my opinion, our, our best option. So, yes, I'll make a motion.
Did, did you have a question?
No, I just, for clarification from, from Barbara, the constituents should have to be clear that this decision that we're going to take tonight is going to stay until we make another decision. So we have to vote again to move it to Whitebrook or, or any other place. I just want to, I just want to be clear with everybody. So the decision tonight is going to be permanent until we decide to move it again.
Exactly.
Correct. Counsel Rist?
And, and the reason we have to do this is Barbara has to inform the voters. Also, the voters will be, they're, I believe, she said that there's two electric signs being provided, so that people who don't get the word that we moved the polling place, when they go to the poll, they'll see that it's been moved to the high school. We're going to do our best to communicate to the public that this is happening.
Let, let me just say that, that in normal times, we would have to mail this to every, every affected registered voter. But the, when the legislature made their changes in July, they allowed a polling place change to be made up to 20 days before, and then they, they just said that you had to notify people in as many places as possible. We'll, we'll do our best to do that.
Thank you, Barb. Counsel Derby?
So just, just quick question, and maybe Barbara, Barbara can help me with this, but it seems like this could potentially increase the amount of traffic on November 3rd. But so, but early voting starts on Saturday, is that right? Or am I wrong on that?
Correct.
So, so in, in order to avoid congestion and whatnot, it, it might make sense to utilize early voting. And do, do you want to just say anything about that at all, Barbara?
Right. Yeah, so early voting does start this Saturday. It's going to be for two, two full weeks, except for one Friday, including two full weekends. And definitely, you know, we've had, well, let me put it this way. If all of the early votes come back, we've already got a 46% turnout. Say we get, yeah, say we get another 10, 15% early vote, it's, it's going to greatly reduce the, the flow at, at the high school on Election Day.
Right, so everyone is encouraged to please vote now. Counselor Zaret?
I'd like to make two recommendations, although they're kind of, one, in the sense of communication. One is that, you know, certainly all of us should figure out how to amplify the, the signal, but whatever the city can do to either, to put out the word about this, whether it be a press release and maybe try to get the Gazette in, or the reminder to just put a quick blurb about this would be wonderful. I also don't know if this is something where the Code Red system would be appropriate to broadcast this.
That is planned.
That's planned? Okay, great. Just, just trying to make sure that we, we get the word out. Thank you.
Counsel Kozinski?
As I had mentioned before, no matter how much we do to get the word out, there will be folks who just are creatures of habit, and they're going to go to Whitebrook and say, where is everybody? So I did get communication, in communication with Barb, and, and she assured me that there would be large readable signage placed in safe locations at, at Whitebrook, giving directions. So as much as can possibly be done to get those folks who show up, perhaps in the dark, after, after dark, 6, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock at night, that there be lighted signage, and they can know how to get to the polling place, so their vote can be counted.
Actually, could I ask, Nicole, do you know anything about the status of the electronic signs?
My understanding is that they'll be in before the election, so we can use them to remind and redirect voters to the high school. That's, I was just flipping through purchase orders and, and the status, but I can get you a, a firmer date tomorrow. But.
Okay.
We're supposed to have them before November 1st. And if we don't have ours, then we will, I will try to borrow some.
Okay. Great.
Anyone else have any comments before Tom makes the motion? You didn't already make, yeah, you didn't already make much. Go ahead, Tom.
All right. I will make a motion to change the polling places for precincts 1, 2, and 5 to East Hampton High School until, otherwise, until something, until we may change them back, or anything else.
Motion is second to change the polling place for districts 1, 2, and 5 to the high school. Any further conversation? Barbara?
Peg Coniff?
Yes.
Salem Derby?
Yes.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Motion passes. Great.
Okay. One more quick thing, and actually, a couple things. So we also met to discuss amending the city ordinance, Chapter 7, to add the position of Health Director. I, I think it was my, my bad on this, that I did not reach out in time to get the mayor involved in that conversation. From what we had, it seemed sensible, but given that we weren't really able to ask any questions, it was what we thought might be best for the purpose of getting this resolved in a timely manner, was to move it forward without a recommendation and set a public hearing where we could have that conversation, if anybody had any questions. So I guess the question I, I might have for President Coniff is, looking at our schedule, when do you think would be a good time to set that public hearing?
I, I don't, Mayor, unless you correct me on this, and I know you will, i- is there a time sensitivity to this? Can we push this off to the second meeting in November? Or do you want us to vote earlier?
No, no, just to know that it's on a docket, and, and coming up, November's going to be fine.
Okay, so that would be the.
Tom, why don't we do the second meeting?
Okay. So I'll make a motion to set a public hearing for this, this, this item for Wednesday, November 18th at 6:15 PM.
Second.
Motion is set at, second to set a public hearing for the adding the position of the Health Director. Any further conversation? Barbara?
Salem Derby?
Aye.
Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Yes.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff?
Aye.
Okay, and finally, I would like to make a motion to add this new business for adding a council rule requiring anti-bias training?
Second.
Motion is second to add the council rule requiring anti-bias training to the Rules and Government Relations Committee. Any further conversation? Barbara?
Let's see. Omar Gomez?
Aye.
JP Kozinski?
Aye.
Tom Peak?
Aye.
Dan Rist?
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild?
Aye.
Owen Zaret?
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Uh, and finally, um, I just want to say, uh, our next meeting will be a week from tomorrow, uh, Thursday, the 22nd, um, at 6:00 PM. Uh, at that meeting, we are going to finally get around to discussing, uh, the ordinance review. Uh, so I would highly recommend, uh, that any counselors, uh, who have any thoughts on that attend, and that any members of the public who have an interest, uh, in this topic, uh, be there. Uh, in particular topics that we are going to be covering related to the ordinance review will include the membership of the ordinance review. So who, who's on it? Um, the scope of what they're studying, what specific city documents are they going to be, um, reviewing? And sort of the process, uh, in which they are going to be operating. In other words, if there is a suggestion for a change to those documents, how does that actually happen? Uh, so those are just to sort of focus people's ideas. Not that we can't discuss other things, but those are the topics that I'd really like to, uh, go over. Uh, we're going to hold this meeting in a sort of public hearing style. So anyone who comes with ideas, we'll hear them all out, and then we're going to deliberate, um, from there. So, uh, yeah, that's what we've got, uh, coming up. I'm really excited to find, uh, into this topic. And, uh, that concludes.
Thank you, Council Peak. Uh, if, with your approval, Council Peak, I will defer updates on ranked choice voting committee and the senior tax until next week.
Yeah, we don't have anything right now.
Okay. All right. I think we have covered all the business and I will take.
No, no.
The warrant.
The warrant.
Sorry.
Nope. You're good.
What did we need to do there, Barbara?
Well, I gave you both options because I didn't know what was going to be approved. So what you need to do is, um, approve and, um, to, and authorize signing of the one for East Hampton High School.
Okay.
So moved to, uh, approve the warrant for East Hampton High School for the next election.
Okay.
Motion second to approve the warrant for the next election, uh, to have all of the voting happen at East Hampton High School. Any conversation? Barbara?
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Owen Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
Aye.
Salem Derby.
Aye.
Omar Gomez.
Yes.
Yes. Now I will take a motion, oh, Council Kuzinski, seconds from a clean getaway.
No, not going to happen tonight. Just very briefly, I just did want to say that the senior tax workoff committee is meeting tomorrow night, Thursday at 6:00 PM, in case anyone is following that subject.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion. Who said that?
Me.
Motion to adjourn. Uh, all those in favor, Barbara. Oh, boy. Um, Tom Peak.
Aye.
Dan Rist.
Aye.
Lindsay Rothschild.
Aye.
Zaret.
Yes.
Peg Coniff.
I'll miss you all, but yes.
Salem Derby.
Yes.
Omar Gomez.
Aye.
JP Kuzinski.
Aye.
This meeting is now adjourned. Have a great evening.
See everybody.
See you next time.
Good night, everybody.